Yes. All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City Council Meeting. It's August 10, 2016. We apologize for the delay. As you know, in July and August, we have one council meeting a month. Usually, every other month of the year, we have two council meetings. The second Wednesday and on the fourth Wednesday of the month. So tonight, we have a lot of legislation. We actually have 31 items. So the staff downstairs is working really hard to get everything together. And we wanted to get our paperwork up here so we can start reviewing it before our legislative session, because as you know, the reality is that our council meetings are really about passing the legislation. This council, as most councils do, we allow a public speaking session, which is why you guys come in and respond to that. But the legislation is what we work hard on as well. So Tuesday nights, we have local session meetings, and that's where we discuss what is going on in the legislation. So, of course, with only one meeting in July and August, a lot of stuff piles up, and we're working to getting that done. So we, you know, we usually start a little bit late, but we never intend to start this late. So we thank you for your patience. We definitely thank you for coming out. As we always do, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I will ask that the pledge of allegiance be led by Councilman Andre Wallace.
(Pleading) The Housekeeping Rule. Also, you can just through these double doors. And as you know, there's a grand staircase, just in case, hoping to ever leave the building, you're more than welcome to leave through these double doors. There's also a back door there. And towards the back, there's a staircase that takes you downstairs, just for housekeeping. We ask for the gentleman to take your hat off during our public speaking session. We ask for, actually, during the entire council meeting, we ask that folks in the audience refrain from talking at all. Even if you're whispering, we can clearly hear you, and we have to be forced to ask you guys to stop speaking. It disrupts us up here, because we can hear what you're saying, believe it or not, but it really disrupts, disrupts the folks that are directly around you. So if you do have to speak, we just ask you to take it outside. We ask you to turn your cell phones off, so we're not disturbed. I'm gonna do that myself. And... Is there anything else? Now we're gonna get something. Oh. The public speaking session, each person is, the request is that we ask you to call ahead of time to the city court office. So if you put on the list, the speaking list of tonight, these meetings are not one where you could just come up and speak. We ask that you speak beforehand. And I see that we have 15 people that have called in to speak. So we're gonna do that. Every fellow has four minutes to speak. We do have a buzzer system. The buzzer will go off at three minutes. At first, buzzer just simply says that you have one additional minute. At the end of the four minutes, the buzzer will go off again, and then I will ask you to conclude your remarks. If you do have a written statement, we definitely let you go over. If you change the time to prepare a statement, we're not gonna actually cut it off. I mean, we want you to get your points, of course. Deputy Court, can you turn down the audio a little bit? Please, get it back. Just a little bit. Is that better? Everybody can hear me in the background? Okay, good. All right, that's much better. So with that, we begin with our speaking session. I'm gonna start with Kristen Reed.
(Mm-hmm) Kristen Reed, 548 South Second Avenue.
Can you guys hear Kristen in the back?
Yes.
So if you can't, I'm in the front, uh, back.
No.
I'll see if I can line this one, please.
Good evening.
Ah, there we go. All right, thank you.
Good evening, Kristen Reed, 548 South Second Avenue. How does evening, it's difficult to speak about recreation, I have two small children, so it very much applies to me. The first issue I have is the carnival that's being held right now on Prospect Avenue instead of at Rush Park. They're seeing, this is the third time that I've complained about this, that park, that parking lot is riddled with potholes, and Rush Park is moved and hated. It seems like we keep renting it out to other people instead of using it to serve our own communities. The second is about the festival that's being held at Rush Park this weekend, and I would request that the on-call number for recreation be put on the website so that residents can call if they get out again, rather than having to call the police, because every event does need to be shut down. But maybe if a city official could come and kind of bring things in and allow the community to be happy while the event is going on. Also, after the King Palooza that I spoke about the last time, I'm requesting that a local unit should be at the events that are held at Rush Park, if there's a large number of people. And also that if people's permits don't match the event, that they shouldn't be granted in. I spoke before about citywide cleanup, and I'm gonna keep suggesting it until it happens. I wanted to know the status of the investigation of the stolen checks. From what I understand, it happened six months ago, and I know we were told the last time there was an ongoing investigation, but I do remember that there was a person in custody, and I wonder what is taking so long to find out stolen checks six months ago when you have someone in custody. I also wanted to speak about the fireman that made the comment about the police officers. He used a student to express his share of political views that I think are offensive to law enforcement, information by the citywide. But I also wanna point out that Mr. Sfizio threatened an elected official on camera with violently harm, and used the slur, and ended in no reperussion.
That's right.
And so what's good for the goose is good for the gander. Whatever happens to this fireman should also happen to this person. Last thing, Councilman Edwards pointed out that Mr. Sfizio doesn't get paid. It's an honorary position, which to me holds the question even more, like who votes are in this city? Who would devote so much time to something they're not even getting paid for? And also, there was a car accident that happened in Jersey with Commissioner Uzzi. I wanna know what is going on with that. I know that there was a demo issue by the city council about the residency requirements, but also, who's paying the tolls back and forth to Jersey every day? Also, Councilman Edwards encouraged us to get involved, and I think volunteering is extremely important, and getting involved in the city, you know, is important. But I also think that it's insulting that we're good enough to volunteer, but not to be considered for the highest paid positions in the state. And also, I wanna discuss gentrification, not necessarily in race, but in the native sons of the daughters of Mount Vernon, being able to come back here, and that includes Italians, blacks, and Brazilians of the descent that are more than race in Mount Vernon, but will not be able to afford homes here, because I believe what's happening to Mount Vernon is that it's happening in Brooklyn, and what is happening in Yonkers and the Bronx, which is soon to be able to afford homes here. And rather than help Mount Vernon, like, improve properties, it's like we're advertising to corporations and outsiders that we're right for the pick, that this is a great city for millennials, like, come get us now while we're cheap, and then we won't be able to afford it. And by outsiders, I really mean, like, Pelham, and it seems that I have to be against Pelham is because I do. We are not welcoming to their city, and until something changes, I suggest that they not be welcomed into ours, as far as recreation goes, including the ice hutch and the tennis courts. It is no secret that they cannot let us participate in anything. There's strict residency requirements, and they're using everything, the ice hutch for town and, um, and the tennis courts. And I had the Commissioner Morton before to see who was using the tennis courts. He said that he was compiling a list, because you do have to fill an application with addresses, and I'd like to see that list. And then also, my question last week, I'm sorry for not submitting it, how many churches are being in Mount Vernon? Thank you, all.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. And I failed to mention that, after everybody speaks, the council allows everybody to speak, and we ask that people that had a comment say until all the speakers have spoken, at the end, each council member will go back and answer each person's questions if there are any. However, there are no back-and-forth discussions at this time. We found in the past that having back-and-forth discussions simply just lead to an ongoing discussion that will never end. So we find it best that the public speaks as a public speaking session, the council responds, and then during the break in between the speaking session and the legislative session, we spend about five, 10, usually goes a little bit longer, to discuss things with the public directly. So that's how we fully handle it. And I do, I know there's a lot of people that have been here time and time again, and there's some new people here as well. With that, I'd like to go over the list. Next, we'll go over the list with Zelda Robinson.
Ms. Zelda Robinson, I reside at 318 Garden Avenue. Before I begin, I also want to apologize for my drunk leading in the last meeting. I will speak to you afterwards to explain why. Speaking tonight, I'm a resident of Mount Vernon. I've grown up in Mount Vernon. I've been pretty active in the community. Until my parents became ill, and I had to take care of them, so it prevented me from being as active. And the only reason I'm stating that is because I have seen Mount Vernon at its best, and I have seen it at its worst. I'm tonight concerned about the fact that I watch TV, I'm so glad I don't know what happened, why we are not on Channel 12 as much, but I'm grateful that we're not, because Channel 12 never protects the positives of Mount Vernon. But I am disappointed when I look at TV and I see, I see us airing our dirty laundry. I work in White Plains, and White Plains has a lot of issues, just like many of our other localities do, but you don't hear about it on the TV. I know that we have some, we have differences, we have, each and every one of us, we're different people, we have personalities that are different, we're not always gonna like what each other says, we're not always gonna agree with each other, but I, it is my hope that we can learn, and I'm saying this to the council as well as to residents that's here tonight, it is my prayer that we can work together, that we can, if we're not gonna be a part of the solution, we don't need to keep being a part of the problem. Everybody here tonight knows what the problems are in Mount Vernon, and they did not happen over the last several months, they did not happen over the last five years, they have, this is an ongoing thing. For the past 20 or 25 years, this is something that has grown. It's just like Memorial Field. We, um, we know the issues there, but the issues here in Mount Vernon are continuing to be a problem, instead of us coming with a solution. We, I looked at the Memorial Field, Memorial Field, there's weed that started out, it's just weed in the yard, now they have grown into trees. The same thing is happening in our city. We need to work together. This is a city that I think is a great city. I defend it every time I have an opportunity to, because if no other reason, I know I'm an intelligent person, I live here, and this is my city. I just want to see us be able to work together. Again, we will have differences, but can we at least learn, and this is not just to the council, this is to the residents as well, can we learn to be, we can disagree, but learn how to agree, to be disagreeable. My concerns are those, and lastly, I just wanna say, I spoke, I am glad for some of the things that I have seen happening in Mount Vernon. It may not be everybody's liking, but you know what? I am glad that I didn't put fireworks, I could come to Mount Vernon and come to the fireworks, as opposed to having to go to Manhattan, or go to New Rochelle. I worked at White Plains, I'm spending too much money in other cities, but I'm spending my taxes here. If we can do something to continue, this is a great city, let's continue to work together to make it even better.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Laura Smith.
Sorry, I didn't get the fire in the area, my bad. Number one, I'm gonna talk about the 14 chicks in the business, I was talking about it. And if you, you know, when you'll speak on that, if you'll speak tonight, tell the truth, but don't say anything about it. You don't know, you don't know, but, you know, I'm just concerned about that issue, because it is taxpayers' money, and we can't afford keep abusing taxpayers' money, merchants in these homeowners are paid in front of. Number two, Memorial Field. About 27 years ago, I was one of the people that sat on the committee in Memorial Field, and I called the person a couple weeks ago and said, "What happened to us?" She came out to me, she said, "Politicians lie, and people get descended in, that's what happens." I'm hoping that the meetings that we had today, we're supposed to have a meeting, and I sort of stole my nephew out, since he works for Maynard, about not calling people to meet, just sign a list, and we go to this Memorial Field, the call for people, put them online or something, because it was a fear of coming here at 6 o'clock, no, it wasn't 6 o'clock, it was here, that there was no meeting. And I called my nephew right away. But anyway, looking at Memorial Field, I'm hoping that there'll be some fundraiser I'm hearing about, I saw in the paper about Spy City is coming here, it's 350, is that, I don't know, maybe you'll be able to answer that, maybe that a fundraiser to stop the Memorial Field rebuilding? I don't know. We have a lot of issues facing us, like you said, I'm looking at red papers about a week ago about, we have sewers back of the people's houses, and that we haven't had our sewers cleaned out in decades? That's horrible. I mean, as a child growing up in St. Louis, you know, I remember over 50 years ago, sitting on the curb watching the cleanouts, you know, those grains and stuff. I mean, I'm hearing about, we're gonna be fine if we don't remove the toxic waste and clean out the sewers. Not only tax payers back, these tax payers, merchants, and homeowners are raping it up by pants, presidents, city officials, no more. We gotta think outside the box and doing those two things, and still, a billion, billion, billion of these buildings, we're the city of homes, not Brooklyn, not Queens, not Manhattan, we're the city of homes. I mean, it's gonna impact the DCW, school district, I mean, you're gonna look at that, and then where are these tax dollars coming from? These people are losing their homes because they can't afford the taxes. Pay states save, but taxes go up. I mean, we really gotta work, I mean, we have the YUCA, that's a building that's still standing there, that's not done. Memorial Field is a dump. Come on, let's think here, we got first, and still, I'm hoping that we think outside the box, that something's going to the taxpayers, we keep raping them of their finances, something, gotta think of something else. Thank you.
Thank you, and again, I want the people to...
(Inaudible) I think one of the problems that we do have is that we keep thinking about ourselves as the first city outside of Bronx, to think about ourselves as the first city of Westerns. I do believe that's a problem that we have, and we should, we should start thinking differently. So as a man, think so, I see. But I come to talk about the quality of our streets in Mount Vernon. Some has been paved, such as Sanford Boulevard, not by Target, but we still have a lot of potholes, a lot of street issues. I lived between Fourth and Fifth Street, and as Councilman Edwards knows, we had a problem before, where I was saying that the street in front of our house is sinking. Well, that was a couple of years ago, and it has sunk a little bit more since then. We cannot, we cannot continue to keep repainting our driveways. It's sunk so much that now the sidewalk itself has cracked, and I would like to know what can be done about that. The other thing I wanted to talk about was safety. As I walk my dog in the mornings, I notice that people, especially along that Fourth Street corner, do not stop for the stop signs. I've almost been hit, I've watched people come down through there and just turn the corner, just, they never stop. Also, going down, uh, Grandview, down towards Third Street, I've seen people drive down Third Street and not stop, almost getting hit. You always say bring a solution, so I have a solution. Let's put a light down. Doesn't have to be a trap, a stoplight, it could be a flashing light, down on that Third Street, Grandview area, also at the Club and Fourth, one of the stop signs are being blocked by a tree that I was planting. So someone going through there may not even see the stop sign. Another suggestion I have is that the streets be repainted with the lines, and actually put the word "stop" there. That, I believe, that might help. My concern is that schools getting ready to reopen again, and I walk my dog until he's 6:00, 7:30, something like that, and I'm looking at these children, and I keep thinking, I said, "Oh, God, if one of these kids is going to get hit from there," even the school bus is running the stop signs. And that's a big concern. The last thing I wanna hear about is the job being heard. As far as Memorial Field goes, we all know the issue of that, but please come cut down those hedges, and cut, what, excuse me, weeds, not hedges. Cancel the cut-down of the weeds along Garden Avenue and Sanford, where people are coming to the city all the time. Come on, we are the first city of Westerns. That's all I have to say.
Good evening, Council President Griffith, and fellow Council members. My name is Robert Masserbell, I reside at 68, Superstown Avenue, Yonkers, New York. I come to speak for the council today as one of the spokespersons for the Mount Vernon President's Charter Coalition, which was recently formed in order to submit a petition to the city council asking it to address many of the unethical and illegal activities that have been undertaken by the Thomas administration during the course of the first opening six months of the year. The several hundred, a petition containing several hundred signatures was submitted last week, and I wanted to formally notify you that the members of the coalition are waiting for a formal response from the council to the various demands that we have submitted. Before I review those demands in brief, I do wanna say that it is our considered opinion that the unethical and illegal actions that the mayor has undertaken pose a grave threat to the interests of the city and to its residents, those who move financial forms that may well put the city at risk for occurring unnecessary legal costs if the mayor unnecessarily battles with various forces. There are also legal harms, because the mayor has consistently ignored procedures that are harder possible to rule of law. It also undermines, thus, political harms to the members of the city, and especially to the notion of self-governance and municipal home rule, because the mayor has appointed non-resident persons who serve as commissioners here in the city. And finally, the mayor's decision to ignore the council's duly authorized powers and authorities does serve a threat to the constitutional system here in the city of Mount Vernon. In what I understand, and we understand, that this is a very serious matter, and that there are real constraints that the council does face, as it considers options in order to rein in the mayor's activities, I do wanna point out that the major thrust of our request is for the council to use its legislative power to conduct hearings, so that we can firmly establish whether or not some of the allegations that are contained in the petition are in fact true. We have requested that the council does hold a hearing to ascertain whether or not serving commissioners are in fact residents of the city of Mount Vernon, and if they are not to, to issue an official finding of the facts, and if the council does determine that they are non-residents or serving as commissioners, to use its budgetary authority to ensure that they do not continue to get paid. In addition to that, we have also requested that the council conclude the special hearing that was initiated several months ago into the raising of the home, and to issue a finding of fact, especially as to whether or not the mayor answered the lawful subpoena that the council issued. I want to remind the council that failure to ensure that the mayor complies with the subpoena, not hold, sets a dangerous precedent that would undermine the subpoena authority of all subsequent city councils, who may find it necessary to investigate far more serious matters. And in that sense, I think that the ramifications of your decision extend well beyond the term of this council in particular. And then finally, we did request that the council direct the Board of Ethics, if it is even functioning, I don't know, to investigate some of these allegations, since, to ensure that we have an impartial determination as to whether or not those allegations are in fact, have merit. So thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing.
(Applause) Jason Watson, refer to yourself as that. I'm also a member of the Mount Vernon Residents' Charter. I'm not gonna be, be good to everything you can say, but one of the things I do wanna bring about, that's a recent situation, as far as the residency requirements, was current lawsuits that the city has against Councilman Andre Wallace. These unnecessary, for those lawsuits, when you have people that are not from the city, and they don't own homes, and they're not taxpayers, it's nothing for them to keep saying, "Let's go to court, let's go to court," because that money got to be paid by the taxpayers. And in the situation where the city is taking Andre Wallace to court, he's the only taxpayer to be in the situation. Richard Thomas don't own nothing, T B T L don't live here, Crowe don't live here, so the taxpayers get sued, and he don't have to pay for the lawsuit, that was his taxes, I think. That's just a good example of why residency requirements aren't allowed. I talked to the council president, and we were part of the council, and I'm very frustrated at how much I care towards journalism, I'm tired of writing about this stuff. Something has to happen. I don't know what we can do, I'm asking, what can we do to help do what you have to? Use us, tell us what you need from us, because something has to happen. And that's all I have to say.
Seven Rivers, 30 Rockford Avenue, 10550. In this country, we have several holidays that celebrate veterans that go fight war, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, fighting for our freedom. So I'm shocked that somehow someone who says they were a soldier, Councilman Edwards, would even think of passing ordinance that you cannot bring cameras, and a whole bunch of other larceny in that bill, into City Hall. And I'm just letting you know that bill doesn't happen to come out of the committee, you can kiss your seat goodbye, you'll never get to be a resident here in Mount Vernon. You should be ashamed of yourself, to call yourself a veteran, and to attempt, to try to pass a, I don't know what's in the bill, you wouldn't wanna waste as much time on that, though. Moving on to Commissioner Uzzi. Section 25 of our city charter says, "If any city officer causes any public property to be lost in the city, you should be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor, that shall forfeit your office." When you caused $16,000 in damage to the city-issued car, sources said he was drunk, would have known why the car you went to Jersey after I seen a letter saying, "You're not supposed to take it." But the council needs to act. They don't act, same lawsuit that was brought against Ernie Davis, would be brought against Richard Thomas, and everyone else, including Uzzi. Secondly, it's pop-up cookouts. I know they're good, or whatever, but I have not seen one ordinance that allowed acceptance of any donations from any business person, any closure of city streets. If someone gets hurt out there, we have a tremendous liability. It's also a money laundering scam. You have reverberating gains, extorting businesses. If anyone has noticed, she has had two Mercedes in the last two years. Second one is a nice $70,000. With a no-show job, she's in Home Depot, Stop &amp; Shop throughout the day, laughing at everyone, while she's out there extorting people living a good life. Now, getting on to some current events here. We had an incident about a year ago, when a cop lost his gun. Remember that? I wrote that story. He was out drinking, common pattern here, drinking, lose gun. Another cop, drinking, fires gun into the air. Think there may be an alcohol problem, maybe in the police department. Just recently, and we don't know why, this mayor said, when he took office, he was going to be transparent, he was gonna release information, more information immediately. I guess that was just some campaign jargon. In June, we had a police officer go to a house party, got drunk. I don't know why any criminal charges weren't filed. We had a police commissioner say, "Because no one was around," which is an oxymoron, who goes to a barbecue party by themselves? So we need to know, why is this cop shooting in the air? The message that I interpreted today, that it's okay, everyone go out and get drunk, go in your backyard... He was out drinking, common pattern here, drinking, lose gun. Another cop drinking, fires gun into the air. Think maybe an alcohol problem, maybe in the police department. Just recently, and we don't know why, this mayor said when he took office, he was going to be transparent, he was going to release information, more information immediately. I guess that was just some campaign jargon. In June, we had a police officer go to a house party, got drunk. I don't know why any criminal charges weren't filed. We had a police commissioner say that no one was around, which is an oxymoron, who goes to a barbecue, a party by themselves. So we need to know why is this cop shooting in the air? The message that I interpreted today, that it's okay, everyone go out and get drunk, go in your backyard, and if you have a shotgun, not a handgun, because you'll get your license, but if you have a shotgun that wasn't around, you could shoot in the air and the police will not arrest you. That was on the news, so everyone go out, test that theory. That's basically what you're telling the people to do. We need to know why was this police officer not fired? Why were no criminal charges brought against him? And the firefighter who posted, I don't agree with his comments, something on his own Instagram account while he was off duty, is suspended and is talking about being terminated. And the cop that was, did the shooting, was about to be put back in rotation. So we need to hear about this investigation, and we need more answers. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sharon B. Jones, 335 Garden Avenue. I have a condition that's called trigeminal neurology, which means the largest nerve in your head, it's not functioning, it hurts. I had brain surgery, but it's the gamma light radiation surgery that they would not have to cut a quarter-size hole in my head to dent the nerve. And I had the surgery, it can fail in six months, it can fail in two years, it cannot take. The guys on the block, they come up with the dirt bikes, and it's like vroom, 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 and it's three and four of them with the dirt bikes. When they pass on the migraine log, and I'm sleeping, it jars me out of my sleep, and the pain is still in my head. I'm filing for it to take, not to have to do the surgery again, or to go into my head and dent the nerve. The dirt bikes does not help at all. And I went to speak with the guys on the street that are running with the dirt bikes, and they like, yes mommy, yes mommy, we won't come to the block, I understand. They came back to the block again, and I went downstairs, and I let them know that, you know, I want surgery to work, that I don't want it to fail. And if they're riding the dirt bikes, it's going to disrupt my healing. So I'd like someone to take it up with them, not coming through the block 10 o'clock at night, running the dirt bikes. And I would like the surgery to work and not to have to do it again. And without the dirt bikes, it might work. With the dirt bikes, it won't work. So I'm asking someone to please talk to them about coming through Mount Vernon with the dirt bikes. They are there 10 o'clock at night, 11 o'clock at night. You hear the long South Columbus Avenue, and I live on Garden Avenue, and you can hear them blocks away in the middle of the night, in the middle of the morning with the dirt bikes. Thank you very much.
President, Members of the Council, my name is Dennis Sandoval, 68, Avenue Yonkers, 23rd Avenue. I'm here to thank you guys, because I'm told that despite the city clerk's laws that ordered legislation to pass the disabled rent increase exemption for the Christian church of the last year, one of the young ones who's walking, he's going to testify in, Dorian Rose testified a few times regarding this, she couldn't even come tonight because under doctor's orders, it's a very, very heavy heat wave, she's not supposed to go out, it's going to be long, long right now, socialists want lots to come out of. So this is a really important piece of legislation that's going to provide clear materials substantive benefits to people who really need it. People's incomes are constrained, and they really can't afford rent increasing for car dealers, legally with taxpayer dollars that subsidize their revenues to make sure that they're not a lifelong burden of compromise. So I'm told you another president holds a nice tone. Thank you for that, and I'll stay for the rest of the show. Thank you very much.
Yayser.
Thank you.
I miss you guys. Good evening, Honorable Counsel. My name is Jacqueline Yayser, and I'm an educator and advocate for children and equal services. Excuse me. I live in Washington.
That's okay.
Most of my community in New York. I am a member of the Mount Vernon Choir, and we work house up inside of the Gold Center, and that is where the music school is held. I'm here to speak on behalf of the children. There's a service dance where it's amazing how the current administration projects the impression of being a part of people, but does little to support the true work of teenagers that are available to you to enrich the lives of our children and community members. Since the beginning of this administration, there's been an all-out effort to shut down the music school at the Gold, and we stood right in march. And ever since, we came before your Honor of the Body, for systems, we have been subjected to repeated threats of eviction. Our children have been locked out and traumatized. Our children are able to learn better by having a musical background, and this kind of disruption is a disruption in their education. Last week, we were once again threatened to be evicted by the United Nations, even after the mayor said he would assist and find a place, publicly acknowledged that he would assist and find a place. And yet the school has not found one, or been made one available to them. We find it disturbing that because the school was established with the support of the previous administration, the good work it does is diminished, and every effort to make it is made to close its doors. We implore you to offer guidance and assistance on this disturbance. If black lives matter, then surely black children's lives matter. We are not here to fight against any administration. We are here to see to it that the next generation and the next generation is able to be educated and be educated to the highest potential. I would like those who support me to please stand. And I appreciate their cooperation and yours also, if you can help us. Thank you.
Harris, 629 South Sixth Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York. Good evening, Counsel. Good evening, everyone. I had an event up at Mitchellville, went to the hotel, it was a shock, and I saw a young lady in there from Mount Vernon, and she said, Mr. Harris, what are you doing here? She said, I can't get a job in Mount Vernon. This happened the same week that Frank from All-Star Power Tools in the third sat me down from 6:45 in the morning till 10 o'clock to complain how he called both seats because he was a business fellow that had openings at his business. When I was sick in a hospital, this is all I've been doing, business with Frank. They sold my wife a lawn mower, packed her up, took her home, and put it together in my yard while I was in hospital, that's how well we can make each other. But the shock of this man saying that he called the city for openings for young men, and nobody called him back, that he was so angry that he took half my money away from me. I walked up and down Fourth Street, there's not one store that employs any black child in any direction, but they can see people running off spending their money. That's the shame of our town, that these people come and they take the money out like vampires, that's why they won't employ our black children, that's right. What is killing is for me to do business with White's Pummy, and guess where? Helen, the good for years. Young person working there was not a family member, so they had something where they hired a kid in the summertime, worked with White's Pummy, they gave him something to do in the summertime. And we are now demeaning these young black men because they heating themselves up, because they couldn't even get a ticket for walking J-Side Street in Mount Vernon, because nobody cares about them. And yes, fans, those motorcycle folks, she's right. I live on Sixth Avenue. Those guys start their motorcycle races at 7:00 in the afternoon, going back and forth of Sixth Avenue to Sanford, up to 7:00, coming down to South King Bridge Road. I called the police, they stopped, nobody's about to do it now, 10, 11, 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning. I think the police department needs to not avoid the South Side and stick a unit down there that can be active when they be racing, because the guys that come off the hutch, and they race at 5:00 in the hutch, they come through Fifth Avenue full bore on motorcycles, so you up whether you want to be or not. The other issue is that we have to start doing about the people in protein from the Bronx. On my Sixth Avenue now, I have a neighbor who moved in, so now there's 10 guys who come to see her, and they park all over the block and just take away your home. And when we try to speak to him, and the guy told me, Mom, you know what you're talking about, the police could stop you from coming here. I said, what are you talking about? He told me I had worked to take my house and pick it up at that time. Because we won't issue parking orders to the homeowners so you could use in front of your property, and if the police do drive through, they can see that you do live there, not some flaunting bum who now wants to come up here and just take away the property because guess what, you have no rights. And for these reasons, if you call the police department about that matter, they fluff that over. The other problem that we have is the still cancerous eyesore that is more and fewer. Our kids are killing themselves, they have nothing to do. This stupidity of doing pop-up events, one thing about doing a pop-up dance, everybody thought they're doing the booboos, but they don't go get those kids a job after the dance stops. I work with Lowe's more, he's at the Boys Club, that's the only guy that doesn't get no awards from anybody, but the dancer takes care of people's kids. And what is so embarrassing about that is the black church associate who wouldn't talk to him because he's Muslims, they won't work with Lowe's, but yet there's two other new storefront churches not paying taxes that popped up in Mount Vernon. We are a critically harmful society to ourselves, we put Band-Aids on major wounds, and we don't know how to cut garbage out of it. We better start doing this, because one thing about the housing, the dirt, and developing people, if you're not taking care of yourselves, you're not going to front to anybody to take care of anybody else. We are a problem. Thank you.
Let me go sit back. My name is Delaney Yehwa, 59, Mount Vernon Avenue. I come to speak about that I'm not pleased sometime with some counsel, and I was at the legislative meeting last night. Lisa, you know, I know your history, I know the good people, but what I did not like was last night at the meeting, you know, some things came across, and you went to say something, and then you turned around, ah, that's okay, oh, I didn't want to vote, right? Your vote don't matter. Your vote does matter when it comes to the serious issues that's going on in Mount Vernon, you know, so that kind of made me upset. I was coming up here to ask the council, but it's, you know, the first pleasures that we have and all this stuff that's going on in Mount Vernon, I just don't understand, y'all as council, y'all can't do anything. And what you say, it's not what you say you are. You always talk about, I give military time, that's honorable, what you did for the Raisers and Vax, all this stuff you talk about, you do, but I don't understand, how this thing that's in office now, because I don't think this is what, you know, what's the label is, I'm not even going to say it, everything that he's doing is wrong, it's not good for the city. This city is like the target of all sorts now. This is what everyone is talking about. It's like you trip on the side, or go rocks on the city, but I don't understand why guys at council can't stop, let alone the wrongdoing that's going on in this city. Lisa, the man is campaigning, still campaigning to me, with kids, we doing this for the kids, blocking parties, this, that, and the other, but here you go with the music program, I'm not even talking about the wrong folks, and they issue that, the owners, but the kids, y'all ready to put them in the street? But y'all can bring it around me, and y'all looking like the kids, and it's about the kids, kids, kids. Come on, stop abusing the kids. I would like for y'all to stand up to that man that's in the big office, because, you know, everything is just wrong. And then I'm watching TV today, when I come home to get my kids, then I see this man in some bright yellow face on the news, talking about a drunk officer shooting in the head, nothing's being done, he's sitting there, and guess, ain't you over the police department, This is crazy to me, that honorable as you are, that bitch went under the rug, you got a man talking about, kill off the police, he's the fireman, you got corruption in the fire department, the police department, the White House down there, which is one of the residents, it's just wrong. All this is wrong, and we, this people, we designed the petition for the council, and I don't want to seem like we're fighting the council, we against the council. No, we with you. What do we do to stop the devil from tearing up this city? That's what we are. Your Honor, you always tell us, what's your decision? Do this, do that, okay, we here, what do we do with y'all? Can we go to court with y'all? We are the residents, we are the taxpayers, because everything that he does wrong, he ain't got to pay nothing. It falls all on us. What do we do? You keep asking, oh, find a solution, oh, we here, you going to what's that? You going to tell us what to do? Because that's what we looking for. Y'all go to court, we want to go to. We not against the council, we with y'all. And the Honorable Counsel, I say thank you, that I was a father, so much, but for the community, your honor, there's still a landlord out here, we had a baby passed away, the landlord for them two buildings, that's the landlord I've been talking about, that's breaking these raggedy problems, doing patchwork, and it's like, nobody, he's not getting these houses inspected, and I just made a call to get some help, because that means open up another house to do work in that house, and the house been vacant, I can say 15 years, but he going to patchwork it up, put some good people in there that pay rent, that's working, but soon as the roof start leaking, and stuff start messing up, they don't want to pay rent. My thing is, you want to take him to court, put him out, and still get a judgment, but you get tore up service. That don't make no sense. And I done seen two judges in that courthouse, just putting people out in the street, even though this landlord is so wrong, and he do people wrong. I want him held accountable. Your Honor, you can come with me to the property, because they working on it now, they got no permits to be working in that house, on pipes going up nothing. So whatever day you want to go, this week, next week, however you want to do it, I can take you there, and you can see, and you do work, that's we have done that house now. Thank you.
David Jones, 33 North Third Avenue. I'm here today, first of all, I'm on the second board of the district, and I think it's really sad that the mayor and those that need to move kick out 150 children, you know, children have special needs, put them out on the street. I think it says a lot for the city of Mount Vernon, how we really feel about residents and our children. And I hope that the city council will look into this, because, you know, this is some of the biggest hypocrisy in city government I've ever seen in my life. I've sent every council member a email, and I've ceded to the FBI, Department of Justice, New York State Attorney's Office. When you have a lieutenant that makes a statement on Facebook, and it wasn't a genuine statement, but she made a statement, but this statement was made on July 7th. Speezeo's threats to a senior citizen that lives in Mount Vernon was made on July 26th on Facebook, and nothing has happened to him. He still holds his post. This is the hypocrisy in our city government. Now, I told you all before, I go around the world and I speak about law enforcement, and I will be a hypocrite myself, but I think... and I will be a hypocrite myself, but I didn't do it in the city that I live in. And the email that I sent to the city council members is for y'all to request oversight intervention from Pete Herrera, the U.S. attorney from the Southern District on your police department. It is a lawless police department. It is a lawless police department. You have officers that violate code of conduct and police reports bringing on them and they're not suspended. So how can you suspend a lieutenant? When a police report sent to the DA's office and nothing happens? From a fellow officer? So I think it's incumbent on the city council to ask for intervention. You have police commissioners that are using their authority to make money. And in reality, the mob is in control of the police department. Let's just keep it real. Joseph Speedyo should not even be a police commissioner. Now, we all got upset when Mayor Thomas said that there was a pizza man, he's a water Christian. We have a garbage man, he's a police commissioner. And nobody knows that. But it's up to y'all now. We support you. You know, I supported you to the point that they tried to attack my wife. So now I'm living a joke. What are y'all gonna do? Because I sacrificed. My wife sacrificed, she ain't even got nothing to do with it, it's she sacrificed. So y'all have to do something. We don't have no problem following the article seventy-eight and sue everybody. I don't have no problem with that. But something's gonna have to be done. Something's gonna happen in the district. This is ridiculous. This is a black city and it's just lawlessness. And we're allowing it because we're not holding nobody accountable. You have it in the charter, use it. What's the problem? I don't get it. So let's, let's move forward. We support you, but we're not gonna continue to support you if you're not gonna do your job. If you're not gonna do your job. And that's what we're asking. Use the powers that you have to correct the situation. It's simple and simple. Because we continue to go along with the nonsense. And the nonsense can be stopped if y'all enforce the charter. And one week it'll be over. So let's enforce the charter so we don't have to sue y'all. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Earl Woodbilli. I'm a twenty-year resident of one fifty-four East Side Avenue. I've resided at one five seven Elwood Avenue since nineteen ninety-three. And my mother owns another building at twenty-two Grove Street. Um, March first, I was arrested by the Mount Vernon Police Department. And I'm just gonna read you a complaint. The defendant, as of date, which is March first of two thousand and sixteen, time and place is one fifty-seven Elwood Avenue, did tell an undercover police officer that the officer would have to pay forty-five dollars to get a legal boot off a D.C. car. The defendant had been illegally charging, charging and booting cars for their Jason lot. The lot actually belonged to the city of Mount Vernon. When informed that he was under arrest. Now, we're talking about booting, which is a violation of city ordinance. Now, I'm telling you in the complaint that the officer says that, um, when informed that he was under arrest and the defendant attempted to, one, push off the protective gambling. Defender engaged in violent struggle prior to being placed in custody. I had pneumonia at the time. I actually went to the Mount Vernon, uh, hospital and they told me I had pneumonia. I went to the, uh, old, the old jail clinic. They told me I had pneumonia and I have pneumonia, I don't need to do the question for medical. Now, please explain to me, because I want to know. First of all, the building department is in charge of booting cars and violations of city ordinance. Now, the complaint says they came to my house to investigate illegal booting, which is a violation of city ordinance. Why is the police department conducting an investigation? That's what I want to know. The issue is the property. I have a lot which is considered by the accessory's office as a non-conform use land, which means that there is no conforming use for it. It's just a strip of way. I live next to Fifty-Five Sheraton, that's four buildings. Fifty-Five Sheraton at some point has violated their barriers because they're supposed to have adequate parking for the buildings that they have there. At some time, they had, uh, violated the barriers and created, uh, parking, um, building for residential living that was once a garage at my investigation. I have a document here, that's a legal document that says that my mother owns the lot in question, lots nine and ten. To my knowledge, lots nine and ten that sits next to my house do not have an address. And I know that any legal entity, land or what so forth, has to have a legal address. All my documents say that my mother owns this land since she born in nineteen ninety-three. It doesn't even matter. If I was on a public, city sidewalk and the police wanted to arrest me for a parking ticket, they couldn't do it because it's a violation. And I just wanted to say something about the firefighter that, um, said those comments on Facebook. Now, the mayor's brother, right? Sold drugs in his town. He was caught with a noose in the fire department. Sold drugs across the street from the fire department and guns. But this man had misspoke, went firefighter, misspoke, be ready to take his job. This is the problem with Mount Vernon. And I'm gonna look at all of y'all because it seem like there's a shadow of government going on. There's the people who do what they want to do and the people who suffered the burden. My mother paid a million dollars in this town just by buying houses. I went to a hillside next to that, the DMP property. I'm like, "Do you really want me to go to my mother's Charles Rocker trap to come for y'all because you are arresting for beating for that?" I don't understand. That's what I want to know. Do you really want me to liquidate my, what my mother worked for? Just for price of BS charge? That's not even a charge in this town! And I'm still going to court for it. And the judge who's sitting on the case, he sits on VCL Court. So I know he knows that it's BS. My court case is nine thirteen. I want to see if they dismiss it because I have a civil court case against the city of Mount Vernon. I can tell you the doctor I got here. You can have this, this is an actual charge. But I'm allowed you to look at this because I've already submitted a copy to the court. As evidence, you will see that.
Harvey Moore, number four seven two, Raymond. I came here tonight to plead more time for the D3 because I heard the judge say, you know, to give some theater fact to the council for passing the treaty that could be a, you know, screen help for me. I have a little penny I can give you, I can give you a monkey, I'll see if there's ability to help. Uh, there's no guarantee on your cost of living, it could be some sort of security benefit. So I'd like to thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Good evening, city council, council members, council president, uh, resident of Southern City of Mount Vernon. My name is Sean Harris. I'm a resident of New Woods in New York. I'm president of serving as the deputy commissioner, one of the deputy commissioners of the city of Mount Vernon Police Department. The reason why I'm here tonight is also, uh, twofold. One, to hear from the citizens firsthand.
Excuse me, Mr. Harris.
Yes.
You speak to the council, not to your.
All right. One, to hear from the citizens firsthand regarding some of their complaints, uh, regarding what's going on around the city. Uh, one of my tasks, since I've been here since June thirteenth, is to, uh, address some of the quality of life issues. And as some of you have, and most of you have spoken tonight, uh, I wrote down your issues and we will be addressing them. As I've addressed issues that have been brought to, uh, uh, to my knowledge since I've been here. So I just want to let you know that we have certain, uh, initiatives going on and I'm putting them on the record to let you, let the residents know that I cannot control, uh, what happened prior to June thirteenth, uh, before I got here. And just to give you some background, I retired in two thousand thirteen, December two thousand thirteen, as a sergeant from this police department. I've had some, some concerns of my own as a member of the police department over the years. The reason why I came back to serve in this capacity is not for a blind-term reason because as of this date, I've been paying anyone. The reason why I'm here, and I'm here tonight with my family, is out of my love for this city. My love for this city. This city that I grew up in as a child, attended the schools in this city, played literally baseball in this city. Bay Grove, attended, many functions, uh, functions in this city. I'm here because I love this city. I walk around this city and I engage with people that I've known for a long time. And I'm here to make sure that in, in, in my power, in my capacity, that people are treated fairly and with respect. And I do not engage in any political rhetoric, anything, because that doesn't matter to me. My pri- my primary concern is the love of this city as a, as a former resident. Now, I cannot live in this city, continue to live in this city with my family, with my, uh, three children and my wife because honestly speaking, I can't afford it. I can't afford the taxes, even if somebody gave me a house, I wouldn't be able to afford it. All right? So it's not that I don't live here because I don't want to live here. It's not that I'm not a resident here because I don't want to be a resident here. I love this city and I would love to be a resident here. So I know that there are some issues regarding residency requirements for the richers serving in this city. I'm fine with that. I, I respect the law. I, I, I took the oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state of New York. And as a veteran, I fought in this country, for this country, to uphold the Constitution. If this council decides to, uh, en- enforce it, uh, the residency requirement, I'm fine with that and I'll be able to spend more time with my family. But it hurts me that I would not be able to serve the city that I love in this capacity. Because what bothers me the most is when I tell people that I retired from Mount Vernon, they have pity. They felt like they, they treat me like I've been through or I survived some war zone. And I hate the image that Mount Vernon has to people outside this city. And I want to do my part in the position that I'm in to improve the quality of life for the citizens of this, uh, city, the residents of the city, visitors, businesses, and patrons of the city. Because when I grew up in this city, Mount Vernon was a great city. Mount Vernon, no, we, it is still a great city, but we have issues that we didn't have before. All right, we have a lot of issues. So I'm just asking that the city council just take my statements tonight in consideration. Whenever you make your decision regarding, uh, uh, residency requirements of, of the city because, uh, for commissioners for the city departments, especially the police one, I, I, I have no concern for any other department. But, uh, as, as a former resident of the city, it's, it's very hard to go through, uh, go outside the city and, and get people to serve in this capacity in one of the most important positions, or departments in the city to, uh, to, to work hard to effect changes for people that they know in this city's person. I know every, every time I'm on the streets, I run into people who taste the alcohol for that. Is I, I see people that I know that I've known since I was little or had, uh, interaction with since I was, uh, a police officer. So this city is near and dear to me and I'm getting to serve you in any way. But if you make that decision that I can no longer serve the city in this capacity, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Council members, to respond to, uh, your concerns and whether comments in chat and with the, I'd like to start with, uh, councilwoman, Roberta, who's here.
Thank you, Mr. President.
This, they should be speaking into the microphone.
Not my words. Thank you, thank you, everyone. I'm now with the same thing. I want to address something that kind of talks about what the Lord's Mac has stated. This is a letter that we received in our package from Mayor. Dear council members, we were disappointed that you failed to show for our weekly scheduled eight AM meeting this morning and did not notify this office that you were unable to attend. Superintendent of Plumbing John Royce and myself were eager to present ideas we have developed to improve building department operations. We are all invested in the economic growth and development of Mount Vernon. A responsive, properly, the building department is essential to achieving Mount Vernon's long-term success. We know you share our vision to move Mount Vernon forward, so we are confident that ignoring this meeting was an oversight on your part. We intend to prepare documents for your review for early next week. Executive branch representatives will be available to discuss further at the city council work session scheduled for Tuesday, August ninth. We hope you, we, we hope you will be to participate in our routine Friday morning briefing's going forward. Now, let me just say that when building commissioners, police commissioners want to have something said to us, they are invited to the city council meetings. This is where we conduct our business with the commissioners. Having said that, nobody came to our work session on Tuesday evening. We do not get a pay grade to go to Friday morning meetings with the mayor. This is not what we do. This is not what I would not do. I intend that if the mayor wants to meet with us, that he will come to a city council meeting to do it. So to your point, he never came to our meeting last night and she said, "Um, whatever you will do." And he never called anybody to say not to come to the six o'clock meeting. I say all of this to try to address issues that we are all trying to work together. Yes, we are trying to work together. But it doesn't seem as though the mayor is on the same page with this city council. I'm gonna read you something else that came before us, which is to me, one of the most egregious things, besides a lot of the things that have happened, that this needs to go, this is out my press conference to the press. This is to the controller. Miss Controller, I wrote you and called you and I am calling regarding my health coverage, which was submitted. Guess who? Just take a guess. This is from Joe Speedyo. To Rosemary Canaccio.
He's not employed, he doesn't have a charge.
Based on our determination, you are not entitled to help ensure coverage for the city of Mount Vernon.
Can the audience please?
This, this is now from Joe Speedyo. Also note that the decision is not based upon the law. And I am trying to get to the bottom of it before complaint is lodged with the state agency. This is from Joe Speedyo. Not sure why this worker believes she has the authority to deny UCC request, but check to see others in the same position and you will get your answer. I hope and trust the controller has not made a political decision because if so, she will be reversed based upon the law. I would ask for a written denial of coverage or refusal from her and send me via email by the close of business today. This man is not employed by the city of Mount Vernon, does not get a salary. He is not entitled to any health benefits. This is obscene, obscene. We can't fire him. We don't have the authority to fire him. These are some of the egregious things that this city council is up against with this administration. And believe me, we are just as frustrated as anyone that has come out here this evening to speak. I am going to defer to the council president to talk about the actions that we are taking and what we are looking into regarding the residency requirements. We are extremely frustrated, we are extremely angry, and we will be doing our best to do the best for the citizens of Mount Vernon because we are citizens of Mount Vernon. And we don't believe that what is going on is the right thing. And we will continue in our investigations. And we will continue in our investigations like you are asking us to do. And that could inspire remarks on that. As far as, Dennis, congratulations. We are passing the dream this evening. We're very proud, very happy to have you here. Ms. Elton Robinson, the last time that you were here, I was very disturbed when I heard about it. No, I'm sorry, this is not, no, she wasn't on the list. I don't know if she's still here, Ms. Reed. Ms. Reed, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But I feel a little disturbed. This is what we're talking about. Trying to comment to better communications with the city. And having such a difficult time in doing that. This is what we are up against. Ms. Reed, I was really disturbed about what you said about the tennis. So, I went down the next day to talk to the people at the tennis center. There are free tennis lessons Monday to Friday, 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And on Sunday, I forgot what time it was in the afternoon, but they do give free lessons Monday through Friday, and I was very happy to hear about that. So, if you can, you know, go down there, if this is what your children want to do. It is an incredibly wonderful program. I have been down there on several occasions where there is an extremely diverse group of people that are running the tennis courts. So, I was very, very pleased to see that. And I hope that helps you out with some of your concerns, because you have many and you articulate them very well. And we hope that we can help you out to some of them. We are, you know, I just can't say enough about this music program. And we just have to, as a council, figure out what we're going to be able to do to help you along. I mean, I for one know how important music is. I have a son that is a musician, and he's in a band. And I don't think he would be the man that he is today if he didn't play the music that he does. It has made him a very sensitive young man to his whole world that surrounds him. And many of you do know him. And if there is anything that this council can do to help you out. Certainly, and I know that, I think, I would speak for myself, but I think that the whole council would agree that we can help you out in any way possible. As far as the shooting that goes, I don't know what to say about any of this. This is just a wall. Maybe Councilman Edwards, he's head of PSC, he will address some of these issues. The quality of life with the police department, I find that it is egregious that that is what is going on. To Japhlyn, no, this is the music. Sharon Jones, I know a little bit about what you're going through, because I have a very, very dear friend that has your condition. And I know how serious it is and what she has been going through over the past. She just got this a few years ago. So, again, PSC, Councilman Yoners, Yon Edwards will be able to assist you with that. And I thank you once again for coming out this evening. And to Sean Harris, I hope that you can move into the city. And thank you so much. Thank you for coming out.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to go down the list and address everybody by name. I'm basically going to go down with issues listed as people speaking. Also, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out versus committing a time here and address the actual issues. How's this? Ready? Regarding residency, like you said, we're going to allow Council President to actually speak a little bit more on that residency. Everybody already knows where I stand with it. As far as, you know, Commissioner Sean, I did say this for about seven, eight years already. I tried to get it done all the way back to when even Karen Watts was here, was talking to her in dialogue with several other people. We need to work on the officer makes no policy, which we want to keep good police officers, we want to keep good commissioners here. We got hundreds of homes in Mount Vernon that are in foreclosure, that belong to the city. Instead of always selling these homes, we need to null over the contract on the outside, because I'm sitting on this side now. We need to work out some kind of situation with contracting companies. Allow them to fix up these real closure houses that we have for the city and offer them to our police officers, firefighters, and teachers, so that they can live here. And this way, we can. And another thing I feel about that is we do not pay our police officers enough. When the law is paid, we don't pay our fire department enough. And it's not no form of way, it's just that the city don't have the money. But if we did that with the homes, and we were able to give them tax incentives to offset the pay, then it might be attractive to have the proper police in our community. And I would like to get up in the morning and know that the police officers live right next door. And I keep saying the same thing, within our town, okay? A police officer is still a police officer whether he's on duty or off duty. He is going to protect the community that he lives by. Unfortunately, a lot of our police officers go back and they protect the other communities outside of Mount Vernon. We need to work on these disruptions, and we need to change how we do things here in this city, because we've been doing it the way we've been doing it for so long. And look at where we're at. Change your mindset. Change the policy. Regarding the car, I keep saying, I think that the mayor and Boosie Commissioner should pay for that car. It should not come from the taxpayers. We've written several letters. He wrote several letters. I saw him in the parking lot yesterday, and I said, "I can't believe you are going to take the car again. Are you serious?" He shrugged his shoulders and got in the car and drove off to New Jersey on our gas, taxpayers' dollars, and everything else. I am sick of this. This is ridiculous. And we're not doing anything about it with all these people driving around these cars. And I've seen one of them up in Poughkeepsie a couple of weeks ago. I was just complaining about that. And, you know, my wife says like, "Why are you being so emotional?" Because I just throw my hands up in the air and start cursing. You know, I ain't ever say no names, because I never call all the names. But I'll be like, "Honey, didn't you see that's what's at the..." "Poughkeepsie, what are you doing up there on the weekend with the city car?" "We pay a lot of taxes here." And, you know, I can listen to the Commissioner when he says he can't afford to live here. And I don't care how much money you have. Eventually, none of us is going to be able to live here. We're going to have to demolish our houses and live in one of these affordable buildings. If we can get in. But I'm saying, that needs to change. We have to do something about these cars. We have to do car pooling, you know? And I know the council is very much in favor of some of the things, because we have spoken about it, we have the brain disaster. It's a shame with your cars. And it's costing us a lot of money. We have to start car pooling. Let them drive their own car here, and then they can use the car, then go home with their own car. Regarding the checks, actually, it was two people that was caught, the guy and the girl. Yes, and we've been asking about that. I've been asking about that. Hopefully Sean's here, and I'm going to ask you again. We need some answers on this particular thing, and we're tired of hearing it's an investigation. The last time before Kelly left, he was very happy. We had a great conversation. Commissioner Kelly said, "Yes, we made great commitment. We got the bank statements. We know who they are. We know what's going on. The whole thing, and we got lied." And since then, we were not able to hear anything about these checks anymore. Somebody has to be accountable. It don't take, you know, years just to find out where those checks are originated from. And where, you know, and where these people, you know, are they even in jail now? Are they, or we released them? We don't even know that. The public needs to know. We need to know. We need to know so we can tell the public, you know? Memorial Field. Memorial. And hopefully, we can talk to D W at least, and yes, the weeds have turned into trees. It does look horrible. We need to all sit down and figure out what we're going to do with Memorial Field and get this thing done already. It's ridiculous. Really ridiculous. Board of Ethics, we have one of them? Well, my colleague just explained to me that it's broken, so, yeah. Is it final? Turned bits, but I'll approach that. Alright, and the dirt bikes, I do see the dirt bikes, and that's a big problem. And I think that's something where we have to sit down with the police department, try to figure out what we can do, because they're not allowed to chase these guys in the street. So, we have to figure out a better way to do this. I think that's something that, you know, the police department can probably sit down and advise us on how to deal with that particular thing. But the dirt bikes is a problem, especially late at night. I hear them all over. I watch them riding up and down the street with no shirt on, popping wheelies, standing on top of a bike. And one day, somebody is crashing somebody else's car, or hurt some child. And, you know, everybody's just going to say, "Why did that happen? You know, we should have did something about it." And then, nobody will think about it, and then it'll happen again, and we'll just keep going around. So, we need to do something about it and start getting active in some of the things that we're saying. Regarding the music school, I don't know what we can do to that type of thing. I don't know if the council has the power to work out, you know, extend the lease or something from the eviction. I'm not sure yet who has to say on that. And that's a Councilman Copeland's section on there, because that's fallen on the recreation. So, I guess the power we heard, maybe should get some answers for us on what we can do about this lease, so we don't be throwing people out in the street, moving schools out of, you know, cutting budgets, doing all kinds of crazy things. This is a very, I would say, spiteful, nasty, venomous, devilish. And if they don't like you, they're going to come after you. If you're speaking out there, they're going to come after you. If you're not doing what they want, they're going to come after you. Just like he didn't like Mount Vernon, he cut her budget, you know, purposely for a soup kitchen to hurt the people. You know, I heard somebody say he was the devil. I've been saying that a lot. I said on record. I don't have no problem with that. So, if he wants to confront me and say anything about it, I say on record all the time. The things that is done by this administration is a shame and is bad and is spiteful, and is wrong what they're doing to the people. And it's wrong what they've done to David's wife, and it's wrong what they've done to the bird, and it's wrong what they've done to Council President. And I can go down a list of all the things that they've done just to spitefully hurt people. That is wrong. And now they're going to do it to the music school, because it's just something that was there under a different administration, and that's wrong. These are the things we have to look at. And that's all I'm going to say at this point. Thank you, and thank you all for coming out. Lisa Copeland, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. We'd be here probably until 11:00 PM if I tried to address all of your things. But I haven't taken good notes, and we'll follow up on this as many as we can probably for the next week. A couple of things I would say that are easy things. Ms. Reed, I think that's an excellent idea to have a mobile command center. I don't know how many other events are going on, because I think there's mostly been at Harley Park. So, I don't know how the times constrain, but we certainly got something that's a good idea that we can go forward with. One of the things that we've, with all these block parties and community give back, if they're going to do it, Rush Park and Harley Park, is we, well, not from Harley Park, but Rush Park is the issue, is to limit, cut back the time to 8 o'clock ending instead of 10 o'clock. So, going forward, also, someone who said they were going to do one thing and did something else, we did, we rescind that legislation, and they won't be having another event. So, those are some of the things we can do, we can adjust the times. We want people to use the facility, because we certainly want to be, you know, everyone wants to have a community to give back. And then, when it turns out to be a booty shaking or something, we just can't have that. And certainly, don't want to expose that longstanding community to that. So, thank you for bringing that to us. I think the president's going to respond to the residency things. Mr. Rivers, in terms of the pop-up parks, there was legislation passed closing of the streets for, as well as accepting buildings. So, that was part of the legislation that we passed for. And theory, I think they're a good idea to build community in the house. But I also agree with Mr. Harris, you know, after that four hours, some hot dogs and some dancing, we need to find jobs in here. And it's difficult. We have so many people who want to do the things, but somehow, the communication is not there between the people with the deed and the people who have the supply, you know, supply, who have the actual things that can, the jobs that they can provide for our needs. So, we've got to do a better job of communicating. It seems like I get like a million emails, and I still feel like I don't, still don't know a lot of what's going on. In terms of the music school, your work has been well documented. This is something that we're going to be creative moving forward to make sure that you'll be able to continue the work that you're doing. And certainly, music is a great equalizer in terms of learning and lots of other things. So, it's unfortunate that we had to go through this. I'll certainly speak to Commissioner and Deputy to get out here before midnight, Michael, tonight. It's always good to see so many people that come to us Tuesday night meetings, where we get to hash out some things. Not always all the things we want to, but we get to hash out some things. It's important that, you know, we don't always see each other all the time. Sometimes at those meetings, we haven't seen each other, and we have a lot of things to address. As tonight, we have 30 items on the agenda, and there really probably could have been 50 items on the agenda. So, be patient with us. It's frustrating, you know. They have good ideas, like, I remember when, let me give you an example. I remember when Bay of Vegas first came up with Art on Third. Everybody thought it was the craziest idea. Art, and I'll never forget, and it got pushed back from the council at the time. I think that was Deputy Clark, Clark, can't remember. But, you know, it ended up being a great thing. You know, every year, people look forward to it, brings a lot of people into the community. They, you know, come into that area, and it, you know, stores have opened there since it first started, and it's been an idea. So, we need to be open to it. So, we just have to work out the right way of getting the information that we need to move forward. Mr. Harris, also, one time, residential parking permits had come up, you know, for specific areas. I can't remember, you know, why it didn't proceed, but it did come up again under former Commissioner Gaylord Morel. So, maybe we could send that to the parking commission, because that had come up several times. It's a good idea. It's an excellent idea.
Please Commissioner go for it every time it came up.
Excuse me, Mr. Harris. You know how it works, sir. Thank you.
Normina, it's always good to see you. Don't let my frustration disappoint you. I know what my one role is worth, and all the people who support me. So, don't take it, we would just, but I appreciate your feedback. It's been a difficult balance, because sometimes I want to cuss and shit, but you can't really do that here now. So, you gotta try to find your ground, and we're not always going to agree on everything. But one thing I will say, we have to follow the rules of the Lord of the city. And I have, and I can't, like Mr. Jones said, I can't be a hypocrite as much as I used to, when I would see and talk about the charter and follow the charter, the charter system. So, that has not grown unnoticed with us. And we're doing things in due process, trust us. It may not seem fast, but we want to do it right, so we never have to revisit this issue again. And I'm sure that you all agree that that's the way you want to do it. Trust us on this. And Mr. Henry, also, thank you, and we're happy that we can do that. Reed, it's important. It's a small percentage of the population that needs the support, so it's important that we can do it. Mr. Harris, Commissioner Harris, I'm happy to see you. I knew you when you were in the police department. And in terms of these motorbikes, I know Mr. Jones talked about these motorbikes. And in terms of these motorbikes, I know Mr. Jones talked about it, it's motorbikes, it's motorcycles, there's a lot of racing that goes on from King Bridge. I was out one night walking in the neighborhood and it, it was around seven o'clock and I was like, "What is going on?" So we've been working with the police department, but they can't be everywhere with the eyes and ears. And, you know, speaking to a resident when it happens, I called, but by the time the police got there, they had moved on to the next block. So we have to figure out a way how we can box them in and catch them. Because I know you can't chase them in the street like Dr. Wallace, because that would just be, that would be dangerous. That was, that's an accident waiting to happen. And I think that's, that's what this all meant to say. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you, public, thank you, family for coming out tonight. This is our only forum because it was the great Sam Rivers that said that, I'm gonna call him because he'll come back any minute. Kiss my secret back. Okay, I'm gonna start with that, okay? Because right now, you know, I am running for reelection in 2017, but they're throwing on us and throwing at me that we supposed to act differently. And I think this is the best time for the citizens of Mount Vernon to start checking the people out that are running for anything. Don't start with campaigns because I'm, I don't wanna spend a dime. I don't want anybody to become any fundraiser for me to support me. When I ran for mayor, I'm already, I'm still in debt. I spent over sixty thousand dollars of my own money so I wouldn't own, so no one would own me. That's why I did it, because you see what happens when someone has to pay for you to become something, not just here in the local community. But it's all over the country. I think you see what's happening with our country now. And it's filtering down to us here, alright? What you've heard me say, and I'll go back to the beginning of this. Ms. Reed, I thank you for being here and I thank you for your temperament and the way you present yourself. That's what I've always asked for over the years, just present yourself well, respect us and we'll respect you. And you do it very well and I appreciate it. But it's something you said, volunteer versus being hired. I started as a volunteer, yes, and I put that out there because I'm proud of it. There's people right here, Dr. Baskerville was one of my proteges, our proteges in the race of ass, okay? Mayor Thomas, no matter how you like him or not, he says it's our fault for making him a warrior, being a race of ass. He believes in my wife and I, every time he sees my wife, he says, "It's your fault." Okay, but this is what we instilled in people, to be strong and stand up. You know, don't do the wrong thing. So I'm not saying that it's good, it's bad. I'm just saying that he's in there, he's been there for seven months. I have to be able to talk to him, alright? So that's why you'll see me stand up against him because I can knock on his door and say, "Hey, there's something wrong. This is the way I wanna see it, this is what other people are seeing it." Because some people just can't, you know, talk to him. When he was a councilman, no one would talk to him as well. Alright, because the way he acted, the way he disrespected council people. No, I'm sorry, the way he disrespected commissioners. And as you know, I was once a commissioner. And I was, I always had an attitude when I went before the council because I knew who I worked for. I worked for the mayor, I did not work for the council, alright? So I always had an attitude, but now being on the side, I understand. If you give respect, you'll get respect, alright? It's the way you deal with people. It's a give and take world, okay? You can't dictate, you can't come in and say you gotta do, we don't have that authority. Right now, we discussed just last night residency, advisory consent. We've been talking about this for a while, advisory consent. Understand, this is a strong mayor government in the city of Mount Vernon. You saw the way Mayor Davis operated over these years. I worked for Blackwood first, I worked for Mayor Davis, I also worked with Mayor Young. So I've been through the gap, I know how this thing works. No one wants to respect people who are there. Sam Rivers, he disrespected me a couple of years ago and said, "Yeah, you got PTSD, you know, something wrong with you." But then he's gonna sit here and say, "You should be ashamed of yourself." Okay, yeah, I suffered from PTSD from the war. When I see airplanes flying around, when I see people getting killed, coming back lame, I think about that. I'm wounded for life, thank God it's only my death form. Okay, so yes, I come off, I come off a certain way, I come off angry. Yeah, that lieutenant who said what he said, was he wrong in saying what he said? Yes, but if you suffer from PTSD as a black man and you've been arrested or stopped thirty times and you go to war and people are still getting hung, but it's just different? Yes, I'm angry, but I've been able to control it almost fifty years. Nineteen sixty-eight is when I retired with a disability, so it's almost fifty years, okay? And I've been suffering with this for many years, but they pay me and they're gonna pay me for life. I get a check, that's why I was able to retire, okay? But the thing is, yes, come in with solutions. And you have been coming in a little differently than you did last year. Because last year was, ooh, man, we was in political mode for the whole year, alright? And you threw people out and you wanted somebody in, the branch is not always leaning on the other side. Okay, you have to be, you have to be able to listen to those people who know. I've been here, I know what all the bodies are there. I know when the police department was at its worst, okay? My job is to deal with the twenty-first century police and this is what I did. I stopped the check of the, the person who was asked to be a consultant by Kelly. I stopped this check last week. I probably didn't have the authorization to do it, but I said, "Man, they have a lot of stuff around here, let me try this." Patrolers also stopped there and said, "Councilman, we will not release this check until you give us authorization to do that." I said, "Damn, I got some power over here." Okay, but what he did was, because there was no documentation, there was no documentation that we were submitting with his reports to tell me what he was doing. I said, "No, this, this gotta stop." And since it's come under my committee and everybody is looking at me and wondering what I'm doing because I'm fired, that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean I'm not doing something. I ain't gotta be in the media. I don't like the media. Because if I say the wrong thing and embarrass my wife, man, she won't let me in the house. We from the projects, man, if you embarrass the whole community, dude, alright? So the thing is, I succinctly do things, I think about things, but I'm glad to be on a team of five, okay? But you're the bench, you, you're the people that we call, come off the bench with things that you can do. You ask, "What, what can you do?" You could take it to, to the top, you could take it to court. Okay, you could take it to court, you could sue as a community. We would have to spend money in order to do it because we don't have the power to do certain things that you wish us to do. It's not not power, we can change that. We can change that. If you want us to have more power, but think about the future, don't think about now. Think about people with that kind of power and you elect the wrong person. Okay, that's what you gotta think about, alright? We on this council understand what's going on, we've been around. Marcus left and came back, okay, he knows, very, very intelligent. Okay, everybody in this council, Council Wallace went out against what he said. Once he brought up that it was a residency requirement that was never really used over the years, it's different. So you can't insist when nothing was really happening in the past. What happened in the past? Okay, it wasn't going on. So now we want to insist, now everybody gotta go. We're running a business family. We have a business here. If we kick everybody out tomorrow, we may not fail, but it's gonna go back somewhere. When I was backing Mayor Davis, it was about continuity of others. It wasn't that he was the best. Because y'all know, I retired to get away from Mayor Ernie Davis. Y'all don't realize that. But when they started perpetrating a fraud against this man, I stepped back in and said, "No, I, I can't, you know, I, I don't like him." But damn, y'all are lying on the road. And show enough, they was able to lie to you and get him kicked out. He's the one that why we got black fired and black police and sanitation and order. When I started, there was nobody like that here. Residency requirements, everybody was hired from this community, but then it stopped for a period of time. Not because of us, it wasn't because of us, okay? Since it's the only forum, I thought about just yesterday, just, I'm sorry?
Blackwood.
Blackwood, okay.
Sir, Mayor Davis.
Thank you, sir.
Blackwood.
Thank you, thank you. Brother Robinson and his wife, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Robinson, for coming and saying the things you said first, okay? Because it's about getting involved. I belong to, I want to associate still after thirty-five, forty years, called the Foreign to Concerned Citizens Block Association in the Heights. Where the Robinsons also live, that's what they call the Heights. And we're very proud of it. And the only reason that's a strong community is because we are a strong association. And I would ask the Robinsons, if there's no association in the neighborhood, join up with the Foreign to Concerned Citizens, we can spread it out. We wanted to bring an umbrella organization to encompass all of the associations in the city of Mount Vernon at one time. But it went political. People started to use it and started using it as a political tool. And it was the wrong thing. That wasn't the reason why I wanted it to happen because I started with, with Eli Goodson, okay, neighbors that care. Okay, I started that because there was a lot of shooting on Columbus Avenue. And I went knocking on doors as an organizer, saying, "Hey, we gotta do something." Okay, Eli Goodson became the, the president of the association and we started to move. That's why we started and because we were the first ones to become a five oh one C three, we want other organizations to come under the five oh one C three. So you won't have to take it to another level and we can do that. But people mistook what it was for. It was about organizing the city of Mount Vernon. Because I know for a fact, if you're an association in a building, in a block or a neighborhood, then you can do something with the collective. You can't do it as one particular person, okay? The thing is, I've been working and Council President and I, we started working with the residency as far as parking is concerned. We stopped that last year. I took it over when he became president. I'm still working on that. It's in the hands of the parking authority right now because there's something on the books. Because I don't like nobody parking in front of my house. I get an attitude. Because I wanna wash, I clean in front of my house, I pave in front of my house, I wash my car in front of my house. So I want that to be mine. So people move into the neighborhood, they don't have that same respect for you, okay? I'm sorry to be long-winded, but I'm not gonna pay for, you don't have to come here to hear me talk because I ain't going to no forum on nothing. I lie about it. Mr. Robinson, again, thank you. Pogos, that's one thing the mayor said he wanted to do, pogos. Councilman Wallace is on that, lights, powers, things of that nature. But they kinda shut Councilman Wallace down. They shut him down, you know, nobody wants to talk in Councilman Wallace's name. He comes with some great ideas, but he wants to change it all at one time. And I tried to mentor the president, but nobody wants to mentor anymore. Nobody wants to mentor anymore. You gotta be able to get in the door in order to talk about something that's wrong, okay? Before, the, the people from the, the music school leave, they're leaving now.
No, we just, we're gonna talk.
Okay, the thing is, we're on that, you know, again, the powers that we have and such. It was brought to my attention about the cancellation of the, the contract at the Doyle Center. And the monies are owed and we, we've talked about that and we're trying to work that out, okay? So it's not that it's, it's on our radar, believe me, it's on our radar. Safety issues, random new solutions, signs painted, the, we can, you know, notes are taken. This is also taped and usually the city clerk, the deputy city clerk, she sometimes writes it out. She listens to the tape and she writes out verbatim what's basically said. So all what you bring to us is sent to the departments that handle it. Again, we don't do windows, alright? All we can ask them to do is do those windows if you ask them that are broken out there, okay? But the weed, such, Memorial Field, you know, it's all, all that stuff is working. But because it's a new administration, seven years, it almost started over again, okay? Like you mentioned, Dr. Baskerville, again, very proud of you, thank you. There is a board of ethics, something I've been working on for a number of years. There's a lot of different boards that we have here in the city of Mount Vernon. So when I say volunteer, adds to that list of all the boards that are out there. People have been sitting on these boards for many years. Ethics board, I've worked on diligently, but it's very, very difficult to get people that will stand up during those trying times. When it's your neighbor or somebody you know, okay, very, very difficult. Say, "You don't pay me enough to take somebody out like this." Okay, and I'm not gonna talk about the incident that happened that people kinda just went back into, you know, what you research and you'll see could stop people from coming out and doing what they were supposed to do. There's an ethics committee, very powerful committee, but you need some powerful people on it, level-headed people. Which is not about getting back, but it's about doing the right thing and asking for the right solutions, okay? Stuff that's happened in the police department? Yes, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. The stuff that happened in the police department that egregious, I mean, crazy stuff that happened in the police department. But you see what's happening all over the country with police. You saw what happened when President, President Obama tried to solve a problem when a professor's house was broken into when they thought he was robbed. He had to call a bear conference or something. And if he had said something wrong, those cops would shut places down. They would shut it down, okay? If we had taken advantage of, of President Obama being in office for the last eight years and did all the things that we should've done in our communities, we'd be much further. And once he got in the office, everybody said, "You ain't doing enough." It's just like us, y'all ain't doing enough, you hear me? You ain't doing enough. Now they wish the term limits weren't term limits because they would like to bring their brother back, okay? But I'm ready for a woman to be president. A woman that's gone through what she's gone through, I'm ready for her to be president. And if she can do a little bit more than the forty-four other presidents did that we met?
Damn.
If she makes two mistakes that the forty-four other presidents did? Damn, I'm ready for one, okay? Ms. Jones, and I'm sorry to be long with you, Dennis, thank you so much. You always bring those things up that concern the public and the, the people who are in this city. Thank you. Reed is being passed, we might have to quantify it, but we wanted to make sure that it was in. Ms. Yaser, I think, is your brother David?
My cousin.
Cousin, okay, that's why I know that name, I can pronounce it as Yaser. Thank you, thank you for coming out. I think I addressed part of that issue. Brother Harris, I think I addressed part of your issue as well. Ms. Fillmore, thank you, you've come a long way, my sister. These curses out there, shit is done, you know? But, but thank you, I hear you loud and clear. I'll take your number again. I called you one time thinking I was talking to someone else, but I'll take your number again so we can fit together and take a look at that piece of property. And, and because there's a lot of egregious things happening with landlords and, that woman that died on Washington, the baby that died on Washington Street. I'm disturbed because she's in the system, okay? I'm a sociology major. There's a system that she was in. They knew how she was living. So where was she in the system saying something wrong with this system here? She's not taking care of baby. If her house looks a certain way, you can tell the way the baby's being treated. I even asked for a czar, okay, years ago. And Sean Patterson Howard reminded me the other day that I brought that up about a czar to look at all these agencies that are in our city. Okay, millions of dollars are going through our city into these agencies. I wanna see how they're accounted for. I wanna see their trajectory, who are they stating? Because you could write, you could write a brand, you know, you could write something and this will give the people, you know, I'm losing my train of thought, but I'm talking too much. Yeah, I sat on the council with the councilman like this, but I understand what's happening. Joe Specio, hey, do what you gotta do, family. Okay, I put the word out today, Joe Specio has to be sacrificed. I put that out today. Joe Specio has to be sacrificed. Just like some of these cops have to be sacrificed for doing these things. You sacrifice one or two and it will filter down, okay? The woman tried to do it in Baltimore, but you got higher courts. You got high that goes to the courts, just like we have to go through. We have to go through the courts, we don't have that authority. Sean Harris, I've known you, my brother, for a long, long time. I've seen you on the force. You came in what year?
Ninety-five.
He came in ninety-five and I was supposed to say six. So you know I've known most of the cops that have been through. There were some cops that were promoted just last week, but I say it's not on the agenda tonight, that were made lieutenant, all brothers, okay? The whole recruit class that's in the academy now, all Mount Vernonans. The first time. All Mount Vernonans. So Mayor Thomas is not doing everything bad, just some that you're saying, okay? Okay, so he's trying, he's, he's doing what he can do, thirty-three years old. If I was in that, I'd probably be making mistakes and think I was all powered from Austin, okay? It's only been seven months, but I say, keep the pressure on us, keep the pressure on the community, but also keep the pressure on yourselves. Thank you, guys.
I'm gonna try to go through this also, try to catch, I'm sorry. I'm gonna try to go through this also and try to catch some things that were mentioned that maybe some of the other council people did not mention. First, I'm gonna thank Mrs. Reed for coming in and bringing a lot of information that normally the doctor would have not have known. I don't know if the event was actually called the Tea for Loser, but we definitely did hear a few first that that's the title of the event that it was. We did check out that information, it seems like we were absolutely correct. And as Councilman, Councilwoman Copeland said, we canceled that next event which we assumed was going to be just like the first one. So we thank you for coming out and bringing that to our attention because it, it started us realizing what was there. As far as the accident in New Jersey, you know, when you read the charter and when you read the code, you have to start with the charter. You have to start reading the book from the beginning. And then once you read the beginning and you understand that, it is very clear. A lot of, a lot of people do is they try to read the charter and they try to skip around from place to place. And, you know, people think that it's okay to take the car to New Jersey because it doesn't say anything about commissioners taking cars to New Jersey. But it definitely says in the beginning that commissioners need to live in Mount Vernon. So if you live in Mount Vernon, there's no need to write the law about taking the car to New Jersey. to New Jersey. You gotta read the law. We actually have on the books that if you, if any, um, employee of the city of Mount Vernon needs to take the car anywhere out of, I believe, the county, um, they have to make permission from the council. And that is to protect people from just driving wherever they want. And if we're running out of property and wasting gas, the charter is actually well-written, well-formed. A lot of communities basically copied the Mount Vernon city charter way back way and then created their own charter. So the protections are all in there, we know that. The problem is that, ladies and gentlemen, we elected somebody that has absolutely no respect for the charter. And it's funny that this year, he has no respect for the charter, but last year, he was trying to enforce it the best that he could. It's, it's, and people need to realize what's going on. Um, Mrs. Reed, you also brought up how many churches are in Mount Vernon? We do hear about all of these churches in Mount Vernon. And I want to be clear that people understand the difficulty with having that many churches. Churches are a root for the community, we know that. The problem with many churches may be that the churches don't pay their fair share of taxes. And that would be a benefit to have maybe a quality store or something in the place of that church. And this is the point that I want to be clear to folks to understand. A church is only tax exempt if the church owns the property and they have the exemption. So just because a corner store church or a storefront church is a place, if that landlord is not the church, that building owner still has to pay taxes. And I want people to understand that. So if you, so the question is not, I don't think the question is how many churches are in Mount Vernon. I think the question is how many churches own property that are, or that are not paying taxes? And do we have that, a higher percentage of that? Right? So I think that, I think that's what your question is. I can kind of give you the answer to that. Because I did that research. You can go to the assessment roll and see who is tax exempt. And what you need would find is not all these corner store churches that pop up, what you would find is the bigger churches are churches that you know. The Graces, the Centenials, the First United Methodist churches. And you'll see some addresses that are most likely parsonages for the pastors. So I did that check one time, you know, we like to drop, there's two hundred churches, three hundred churches, that is not the case. The concern is how many churches own property and are they abusing our, our property role and living tactics? And I can tell you, it's not a spin nation thing. But if you want to find that information, go down to the accessories office and ask that list of exempt property and you'll find the churches, you'll find the Doyle, not the Doyle's, the Boys and Girls Club, and these places that we know are best in the city. Um, another thing I wanted to bring up is about the YOCA. I know the mayor, um, had a front page article in the Journal News about how the YOCA is falling apart. And the rooms that he was in are falling apart. But you must know, ladies and gentlemen, the Doyle are not the rooms that were renovated by Ernie Davis's administration. Somehow, somebody, somehow, somebody didn't go into the gym. I know they took one picture at the pool, but they didn't show the pool with the water in it. They didn't show the locker rooms. They didn't show the, the locker rooms downstairs next to the pool. And the reality is that the Y should really be open this summer for the kids to have a place to play basketball. Yes, there was water damage in the Y, the roof is done at the Y, so if you go up to the roof now, you don't see those cracks anymore. So the real question is, if you're really thinking about the children in Mount Vernon, why is the Y's gym not open? And why is the playground next to the Y not available to a camp that can use those facilities? Because it's absolutely ready to be shodded and half-open. For some reason, if you want to keep saying that the prior administration is corrupt, it's kind of hard to open up a facility that is being prepared for your tax dollars and then still say that the person that did all that work on the industries and they did all that work is corrupt. You can't have it both ways. I'm telling you, ladies and gentlemen, the Y could be open to have a basketball group, a camp, small programs in the first two floors upstairs in the rooming houses that was never intended to be fixed, at least in that first phase. And the roof is fixed as well. So I'm just letting you know some, some facts there. Um, this is, Matt, you mentioned something about, and I know you were just beating off the cuff, but you did mention something about the sewers not being cleaned out in twenty years. That would be almost impossible if the sewers weren't cleaned out. Because if they weren't cleaned out, then we'd be backing up into people's houses. Now, we do have instances where we do have sewers that back up, but we do have a sewer cleaning team that goes out and sprays them down and gets them cleaned out. But that is an issue. Because there are also corners and stuff that get consistently clogged. So we do have an EPA problem where we have very old infrastructure and we've had that problem for years. The difference in administration is how you handle the problem that we have. So the prior administration tried its best to prepare what it could, the emergency repairs that we needed to do. The prior administration never wanted to say we need to spend all this money immediately to get it all fixed. Because the reality is, ladies and gentlemen, is that we don't have all of that money to get all the work done that we would like to do all at once. So what we've tried to do is do piecework at a time and we've tried to hold off the EPA, just like our other neighboring communities. Councilwoman, uh, who's on myself, meet with the other communities on a monthly basis. We are all going through the exact same situation because all of our sewer lines were built almost a hundred years ago. And they're collapsing and cracking as I think of. But the one thing that you don't want to do is try to tax the taxpayers all of the time to get everything fixed at one time. So we're working on that, ladies and gentlemen, we're working on it. Um... I wanted to say to the Robinsons, thank you for coming in. I was, we were very disappointed that you left the last time and I can understand you had a reason to leave. But we want to hear from our constituents. When we see, uh, we have a lot of people in the room that come on a regular basis, so if they were to leave, it would make a difference to us. But it definitely hurts us to see a family come in and, whether you're related or not, we knew that you guys were together and you had something that you wanted to bring to us. So we consider you guys family. So to see you leave, we were shivering in our, not shivering, but we were unsettled that you guys were leaving. So we want you to understand, um, we don't want to waste your time. We appreciate you coming in and, and we're glad that you did come back and you did say you were coming back, um, we're glad that you did. So thank you for coming in and spreading your concerns, we really appreciate it. Um, Mr. Basfield, thanks for all of your, all of your work, um, being, um, in the profession that you're in. Um, we could really be, we really keep it to more of your intelligence, working the dark community, um, to do what you do. So we thank you for the work that you've done as well. Um, Mr. Rivers, it's always good to see you. Um, I think Councilwoman Cooley did say, um, about the pop-up parks, but I also want to add that, um, there were about two or three pop-up parks that I found out about on Facebook that were happening and the council was very upset about that as well. One thing that the council has the authority to do is approve almost everything that the mayor, um, wants to do. So even the money that he's spending throughout the year, that was approved by the city council through the budget process. Um, if the mayor wants to, um, spend any money, um, that's outside of the budget area, he has to come to the council, spend that money. Uh, if the mayor, um, wanted to, if somebody wanted to donate to the city of Mount Vernon, the mayor would again have to come to the council again to get the authority to accept that dollar. And I bring that example to you to see, so that you can see that the mayor cannot do everything that he or she wants to do. The council is the body that reviews the work of the mayor and then validates that this is what the people want. And that's why we have you guys coming out to us, so we can help the mayor set the tone. There's things that the mayor wants to do that we sometimes don't agree with and we're not trying to hurt the mayor. We actually may have concerns that the mayor may not be paying attention to. Because once you're in the city hall and you have people begging to you all the time, sometimes you need some money from the outside saying, "Man, I don't think that's the right thing." That's what this body, um, is for. And it's a shame that the mayor does not, um, pay attention to a lot of the things that we, um, help give advice to. Um, so I wanted to bring that out. Um, Councilman Edwards talked about a parking permit for residents. Um, we worked for a number of, worked for a good few months working on a residency requirement because we know we have a lot of development coming into the city. And we know that parking is an issue. Back in the day when our cities were, when our city was built, uh, there was nowhere near the amount of cars that we had. We know that people are parking cars in neighborhoods and leaving them there for months on end because we do have some communities that have no alternate side of the street parking. We know that there are people that, um, don't live in the community or come to the community simply to move or even push their car across the street. And we feel that we're gonna get to a point, looking forward now, we're gonna get to the point where we're gonna need to have residency stickers in the window. So when the cops drive up the block, they know this car belongs in this block, this car belongs in that house, that house or whatever. And that car over there does not belong there. And that's the car that you flag and look at a little bit closer. So we've been working on that. Uh, and when administrations change, commissioners change, you lose a lot of bandwidth, you gotta kind of start all over again. Now, we've been working on that, um, we've been working on that. Um, folks from the music school, I mean, this is really an excellent example of how this administration just does not care about the good work that people are doing in the city. When you become mayor, you keep the best that's in the city and you get rid, you get rid of and you start with things out, things that you absolutely know that are not right for the city. And this council knows that there are things that have been going on for years that we actually hoped that this mayor would phase out. And it doesn't seem like this happening. It seems like it's baiting out a lot of the good things in the city. And then it's been injected with all these things that we have no clue about who are these people that are running around acting like they control our community? And, and Mr. Harris, we're not talking about you, sir. We know you. There are people in the community that have moved on, but we know for that that they love this city. We know that. That's not our prime concern. We're using the law, the law of the charter, the code of the city of Mount Vernon to now help us enforce things that we must enforce. So there are people in this city that don't care about the people and how hard they work, they're in this city and doing whatever they want. We had the example of Specio asking for health benefits, but we can't keep allowing this foolishness, this nonsense, this disrespect for the council. And if they disrespect the council when you're home to work, what do you think they're doing to you when you're not home? So we have real issues that we're concerned about and we must do everything legally because this administration will come after people individually. And the good work that we do is that it's done to us, it's done to the people that are just citizens. Retribution is what's going on now. We've never seen anything like this. And if you don't believe me or any of the council members, talk to anybody that works in this city. Anybody that works in this city. People are fed up, they've never seen anything like it. So legally, and I'm gonna say again, legally, cautiously, and the aim is not to destroy or disrupt. The aim is to win, to correct and make things right in this city. So this council cannot and will not, at least under my leadership, go down a path where we are helping to destroy the name of Mount Vernon. So we're gonna be, uh, carefully executing, uh, and bringing up to more people, people in a higher authority and let them know that what's going on in Mount Vernon is wrong. We're gonna put a plan together to let them understand that it's not just Mount Vernon because people love to just disregard us down here in Mount Vernon. The Journal News sells papers on the things that happen negatively in Mount Vernon. We know true. Because people in Bronxville, Wright Plains, everywhere else, love reading that the negative things that are going on are not happening in their town. So they love saying, "Oh, Mount Vernon, Mount Vernon, Mount Vernon." You, you, you defend the city. We must defend the city because we know that ninety, ninety-five percent of the people of Mount Vernon are good, hardworking, creative, innovative, talented people. And the only reason why a lot of us are still here is because we love where we sit. And a lot of us can afford to move to another place, but this place is a very special place. I'm, I'm going anywhere. And I will bear in the room and we will wait until this mayor is out of office. And there will be another mayor that will do the right thing to this city, I'm guaranteeing. But the people, the people are the ones that elected this mayor. The people are the ones that didn't do the research that they should have done to see that this mayor is inexperienced to run this city. You have to have experience to run a city of seventy thousand people, of multi-cultures, multi-levels of education, multi-financial situations. This isn't Bronxville, it's easy to run Bronxville. You're talking to lawyers and people, and professors and chemists and it's, it's easier because you have the experience here. But we have a need, community. So the crime that goes on, the unfortunate incident with the, with the baby, this is, this is real. And this is what you need to know. You have to have experience to run this city. I can't understand why the people of Mount Vernon elected an inexperienced, non-accomplished person to run our city. And they... What was done? Too many people ran. Too many people ran. Too many people ran to flip the vote. So, yes, we want you guys to keep revving it up. Your job, ladies and gentlemen, is to get the word out. It's like a new campaign. The campaign is educating people to know what's going on in your city. We know! And we're working hard to do what's, what's right for the, for the citizens. But you guys need to relate to other people that just simply get on the train and have no clue that in the years to come, their taxes are gonna be high, we're gonna lose lawsuits, and we may have crime in the city? But crime does not need to be in City Hall, I'm telling you. There's criminal things going on in City Hall and people don't know that it's criminal. You have to work every time. Because if I go out there and say, "The mayor, the mayor, the mayor, the administration, the administration," you know what they're gonna say? "Oh, Marcus, that's because you want to be mayor." Let me tell you this. I don't need to be mayor in the city. I love being on the council. I love putting my two cents in. Maybe one day I'll be mayor if I need to be mayor, but right now, my life is not destined to be mayor. There's a time to be mayor of this city. It's a get-back. Ernie Davis was right. You need this job like you need a whole unit. It's a lot of work. You have to be committed and dedicated to people in need. This is not a pleasure job, this is a twenty-four-hour job. So if you find that the mayor, all he does is at pop-up parks and slides and this and that, this is not very adventurous, ladies and gentlemen, this is real. This is real. So we have real issues that we need to take care of. We can't abandon all of these potholes, but then I'm hearing that Garden Avenue, and right Garden Avenue is, is, is falling apart. So you can't pothole the whole city. So we're, we are working. Trust this. This council is working. We spent our time to legally discuss what we need to do. And we may try other things and may not work, but we know that the council sits back and we don't act without sitting in that room and making a decision. So if there was word out that we had a voice vote on some issue, we didn't have a real voice vote. Because the word got out that what you need to do, administration, is wait until the official council meeting to hear the results of what you need. That is the right way to do it. That's not what they did. The press again, the press and media, Facebook got in the way and things going on that just just aren't right. I'm into correcting that. And there's an election here coming up. People want our seats. They don't know what we do here, and no clue. They just figure, oh, I could be up there. People are here coming in to kind of figure out what we do. You can't figure it out. You need to sit with us and learn what it is to be a councilperson. And once you take your time to learn what we do, you'll be able to work with us and see our challenges and see our frustrations. It's not easy. A lot of people think, oh, you can just do this. You're not doing what you can do. It doesn't quite work like that. It's harder than you think. So we're gonna work slowly, and politics is slow. When you elect somebody to office, that person is supposed to be there for that full term. This country was built on there not being quick change. So the people of Mount Vernon voted this mayor and this administration in, they should know that they, we may have to wait this out. We're gonna do whatever we can to make it clear to the powers that be. Now, we've been told that we're not pulling the powers that be. We cannot fire people that are running the mayor's administration. But the mayor, the person that you put in place, can instantly fire some of the people that he appointed that is hurting each one of you. So it's not the council that you need to be talking to. We're with you on this. You guys need to be working on that mayor downstairs to understand that the people that he put in place, now, Mr. Harris, who wrote in the news, everybody, that the people that he put in place have no clue who you are. They don't know where you live. They don't know where Garden Avenue is. They couldn't tell you where Garden Avenue is. They're gonna look for a map to find out where Garden Avenue is. They're lucky that we have some younger streets. So pay attention, ladies and gentlemen. The council board will be, we have a planned place, and I'm not gonna tell you what I wanted to do. We're just gonna do it. You'll find out. George Brown on vacation, but my chief of our legislative assistant is down on vacation as well, so the horn is holding it down. We always say, try and be here as well, right? Okay, so we're ready to begin the call, but we're gonna do it. It's late, sorry. Oh, we need to referrals first, right? Okay, so legislation, public forums.
Thank you, Councilman President. Number three and number five is for information. Number six is on the agenda. Number seven is for information. Number eleven is for information. Number thirteen is called for. Number thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four is all for information. Number thirty-five is called for. Number thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty, forty-one, forty-two, fifty-four, and fifty-eight is all for information. Number sixty-two is on the agenda. Number sixty-four is for information. Number sixty-six is called for. Number sixty-six, as they correct, is on the agenda. Number sixty, sorry, seventy-two is on the agenda. Number seventy-six is on the agenda. Number eighty is on the agenda. Number eighty-two is called for. Number ninety is on the agenda. Sorry, excuse me, number ninety for information. Number ninety-one is on the agenda. Number ninety-two, ninety-three is for information. Number ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, one hundred is all information. One oh-two is called for. One oh-five, one oh-eight is for information. And then I have two add-ons for the vote on the agenda. And I can complete my report, council.
Thank you, Councilman Roberts. Councilman Copeland, give your resources.
Thank you, Mrs. President. Number ten is for information. Number thirty is for health. Thirty-five is for information. Seventy, seventy-one, seventy-three, no, seventy, seventy-one are on the agenda. Seventy-three is for information. Seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty-one, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, and eighty-eight are on the agenda. One oh-four, one oh-six, and one oh-seven are for information. One add-on, one add-on, one add-on. One add-on, one add-on, one add-on regarding a pop-up. A pop-up. Thank you. Tomorrow, we're going, uh, Mr. President.
Councilman Edwards, Public Safety, Congress.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number four is information. Item number eight, it's not on the agenda, so it's, I guess it's for information and it's called for. This is gonna be, that is also gonna be called for. As you say, it's not on the agenda. Number twenty-nine is for information. Item number fifty is being called for. Item number fifty-two is being called for. Number fifty-six is being called for. Fifty-seven and fifty-nine are for information.
Fifty-two is on the agenda before fifty-six.
Fifty-two is being called for. Yeah, they said, right, it's being called for because a, um, information came out from the council.
Thank you. And fifty-six?
Fifty-six is being called for. Fifty-seven, fifty-nine for information. Item number sixty is for, is being called for.
Any other on the agenda?
Thank you. Fifty-six, the only thing I have on the front page today. Fifty-seven, fifty-nine for information. Sixty called for. Sixty-one is being called for. Eighty-nine and ninety-nine are for information. Like a business report, Mr. President.
Excuse me, number sixty-four. I had it on my table, did that change? Madam President, please. Sixty-one, sixty, sixty and sixty-one?
Regarding item number...
It was on the agenda, it's on the agenda.
Regarding sixty...
Now, for turn your microphone.
Item number sixteen and sixty-one are on the agenda. There were, as the council knows, so multiple items are on the agenda. We worked diligently today, and it was just, we had to drive to place and then finding some kind of, of a more legitimate council, a government that was...
I do speak to Commissioner Norman today. Did she give any information in particular that her, uh, interview for?
Yes.
Or information most related to the...
She delayed information to the late interviews with the local department. And items on the agenda are number twenty-nine, item number twenty-eight, and item number twenty-nine.
Okay, thank you.
I just, with regard to item twenty-eight, twenty-nine, um, there was some information that we are still missing. These are those we need to prepare. However, with regard to item number twenty-eight, there is information missing in terms of exactly which meetings are, uh, going to be taken away, and there's also, uh, not a term on the agreement. So with regard to twenty-eight, twenty-nine, uh, Mr. President, ask that those can call or even if they are on the agenda, there is some information that we need to...
All right, so those two items for refining and planning, uh, with information from Corporation Council, you just include those when you talk about it? With that, Councilman Edwards' report is complete?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Councilman Roberts of Miami, Miami.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number one is for information. Item number nine is on the agenda. Number twelve is the called for. Items number fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty-six, thirty-nine, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six are all for information. Item number forty-nine is on the agenda as well as item number sixty-seven, and items number one oh-one and one oh-three are for information. Please mark it. Yes. Councilwoman Lutz, you also have on the agenda, when we were debating, as discussed last night, resolutions that enable the construction of Mount Vernon, and also... Councilwoman Lutz, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Council President, aye.
Here. Legislative public forums.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a ordinance authorized the way to issue change order number two, PCI initiative for operations, over.
Oh, yes. Go for it.
Councilwoman Lutz, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Councilwoman Edwards, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Council President, aye.
I have a ordinance authorized the way to issue change order number two, PCI initiative for the amount of one hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-seven cents, over.
Second. Another question? I've just been opposed in the, um, boardings. These two issues are for street paving. Uh, one is ranked from the federal government, and another one is ranked from the state. Go for it.
Councilwoman Lutz, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Councilwoman Edwards, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Council President, aye.
I have a ordinance granted permission to, one is we were encouraged to hold a development education fair and the Department of Public Safety to close Franklin Avenue between East Third Street and Adams Street on the twelfth, on August twenty, so over.
Second. Councilwoman, so just turn your mic, please. Another question? Go for it.
Councilwoman Lutz, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Councilwoman Edwards, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Council President, aye.
I have a ordinance granted permission to Mount Calvary C and E Church to hold a church event and the Department of Public Safety to close the streets on Second Avenue between East Bush and Second Street on September third, Friday, September eleventh, so over.
Another question? Go for it.
Councilwoman Lutz, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Councilwoman Edwards, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Council President, aye.
I have a ordinance granted permission to Portuguese American Club to hold a welcome mat feast and the Department of Public Safety to close Portugal Place between East Prospect Avenue and Elm Street on September tenth, so over.
Second. Another question? Go for it.
Councilwoman Lutz, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Councilwoman Edwards, aye. Council President, aye.
I have a ordinance, amended charter, charter two fifty-six of the code of the city of Mount Vernon entitled vehicle and traffic, so over.
Councilman, I would ask you to hold this, uh, hold this one more time because of the conversation we just had with Commissioner Harris. There's, uh, just some issues about changing all the streets that they're stating where they are. Um, please let, or one more time, I just, two minutes, and that's it. Okay, I'll pull that. Thank you. Call for? Okay, oh, okay, thank you.
Give your sources.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a ordinance granted permission to the Department of Recreation to close the Barbados Gas Company, Morizay, towards twenty, so over.
Second.
Another question? Go for it.
Councilwoman Lutz, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Councilwoman Edwards, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Council President, aye. I have a ordinance granted permission to the Department of Recreation to close the March, our community event day for the hot, slow entertainment on August thirteenth, so over.
Another question? Um, I see that time is at six. This is a different one. This is that bar, the 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 bar. Thank you. Go for it.
Councilwoman Lutz, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Councilwoman Edwards, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Council President, aye. I have a ordinance granted permission to the Department of Recreation to close the March, our event day, love day, community program with Ken and Paul and the remaining Eric, I want to tell you, so over.
Second.
Another question? Go for it.
Councilwoman Lutz, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Um, only, uh, I don't know how, I, but, no, ordinance is on Thursday, so I should just work it. On Thursday, it's about twenty-two.
All right.
Aye. Councilwoman Edwards, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Council President, aye. I have a ordinance granted permission to the Hope Jones of Baseball Glass Corporation to rent brush bar for a beauty bar group and performance on August thirteenth, so over.
Another question?
Another question, Mr. President? This is, um, the event, you used to tell that it moves on after eight o'clock. It's a private experience, and if you go into ten, you know that usually means long enough time, so maybe some of the community wants us to, uh, shut this down, maybe.
One question, I didn't know that the event starts at nine, but I'm assuming that it's, uh, there's a set time, but do we really need them to start so, we're a little unsure. We had a, uh, building award with this one, but in what way they really can start that early or set up, I'm not sure what time the event starts. Usually events go for, say, six hours. This is taking up, um, very long time, but I think it's not really, we should look into the set time to shorten it. As opposed to, it's eleven hours for the musical bar.
I'm checking our, uh, seeing if, uh, I'm only sure, I think, uh, I know, I know we changed it down to, uh, uh, eight minutes, but I know that when you have breakdown times, breakdown party, that means people are still not getting out of that park till about one at night, because that type of, I'm, I'm still...
It's longer than playing music, because they're breaking down.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm still uncomfortable. I just wanna make that on the record, with that time, with that eight o'clock at night, and that I know that it's far as to continue to keep going on and on and on, and the police do not shut them down on that time. So I still wanna put a record down for the six o'clock shutdown so that they can be out of the park before it gets dark. Um, but, uh, you know, uh, just wanna say that, all right, that I'm comfortable with after, hopefully, these last events and those type of, uh, events that they're holding. And I've seen many of these posters all around the building, the road, and they're expecting five to a thousand people in that town. I think that, uh, to me, I think, as I said again, I cannot express too much that I'm more comfortable with that time. So that's all for record.
I just hope that it will, um, absolutely endorse the eight p.m. time. I think, um, at this time of year, um, we're still right outside at eight p.m. I'm hoping that police realize that if you shut it down at eight, that that means that, you know, the plug is removed from the speaker system and the sounders and all, and it begins to disperse people. So I think we actually made a very good step, uh, pulling it back from ten p.m. I think we should all try and monitor this and get a report, please, to see how folks disperse. I remind that folks are still delivering to ten p.m. anyway, then we'll, we'll make it earlier. So, thank you, sir.
Also, Mr. President, we sit later, maybe only one light. Maybe only one light can be put on if it is dark versus trying to, um, some of this way to disperse the area, but we need to look at contracts that go out there to make sure that if it's all the names that go there.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other comments? Go for it.
Councilwoman Lutz, aye. Councilwoman Roberts, aye. Councilwoman Edwards, aye. Councilman Roberts, aye. Council President, aye.
Yes.
I have a ordinance number eleven, ordinance granted permission to the Department of Recreation to close the March, our event day, conservation and conversation under the store on there and on that event, so the friends and elders and artists, recreation, change, corporate, corporate, all this, all this, so over.
Second. Another question? Another question, President, please go. Please, Mr. President.
Excuse me, I'm, uh, busy, I don't want to talk to you. Five minutes.
Under, you have a law?
No, it's, um, I'm, uh, 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 I'm,
Yes, questions? Just turn your mic on.
The question is present. You know, while I believe that this concept might be good, I am not comfortable with the process mistaken to get to this point. And, yes, it is going to cost some money. Not to exceed $2,000, it says here. It also said something in the recommendation that it was going to go to a charity. Some of the proceeds did not say were charity, it was going to go to... I'm not comfortable with the way this was told to us. So I would be very honored.
Just to add to my comment, this was both of us about this week. I don't know where it came to the recreation policy or what it was. But it was both of us and it was some discussion about setting a special meeting, which I would guess if you use another special meeting. But it was burgling. It was burgling because I got a call from Commissioner Moe himself. He asked about and said, "If both of us have this agenda, please consider this one to put out." I had a time, I had to put out there so people would know about it. So it was both of my intentions. I got the call, Lisa got the call. When I got the call, I said, "Well, I don't know where Lisa went, so we'll tell her." And I tested it and said, "Lisa, we should jump on it and see what she's all about." And that's when I think I heard that it was a special meeting. Which there wasn't. And that's why it came to us. Burgling versus right.
Actually, there was a special meeting. The mayor said that in burgling information before the special meeting we had after our scheduled meeting in July, that information did not arrive. The only information that I got in Slade City other than asking what I thought about it was a 30-second commercial. So, he did questions that I think this council would have had. As far as what direction, the slope, how many people, what are your expectations, police force closing up the streets, mover streets being closed. All the questions that I think this council should have asked. Whether they have insurance, this company. I'm assuming that they will have a certificate of insurance, but nobody came forward and said that they will have a certificate of insurance. So a number of things that normally this council would do to vet something as major as this. So personally, I feel like I can ask any questions in regards to this Slade City. It would be nice to have some discussion. They didn't have to be a defender. But no reason for the administration was able to come or the council to have certificates and discuss with us what it was about.
Question point two. Well, as I understand it, you needed to have that spoken about. But I take the link of that. I mean, I think this is a great opportunity for you to come back on Friday and give me your question and we have some meetings. I mean, I think it's something that's lived in the city. I mean, it happened in the 90s. I saw a presentation of... I was sitting at the 21st Senate meeting and, you know, they came in. But I actually thought you were pretty grateful for the numbers standing there. I mean, I sat there and saw...
I was asked, as council president, three times, what the council would do. And I said, "I do not know the council with them." I said, "It's probably best to wait until the August 10th meeting to find out what the council is." I also said that we have that work session of two days. And I said this to people who possibly may have not known what the council procedures is. And then after three people from the administration called and asked me those same questions, I told them the same answer. The next thing I realized, I got a call that was in the German news, that the council had a "Görlung-Burg", which I've never heard of before. And it's happened before.
You've been told to vote, now I can ask first.
But those votes were done based on one true knowledge. Said people were going to vote.
No, that's a small vote. That's a small vote.
And I'm pleased to do that. So, what's my...
Boy, if you are prepared to support it, if you want your answers, I hope that you will go back, tell them what you're going to do.
I'm prepared to vote.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Griffin?
Aye.
I have the ordinance number 13, granting permission to the Department of Recreation to co-sponsor a city test. Arts on Third, with the term of non-running arts renovation and education programs for 9 to 18. So move.
Sir.
Any question? Go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Griffin?
Aye.
I have the ordinance, rank of request permission to change the radio civil service line coordinator of programs for disabled. So move.
Sir.
Any question?
A question, this position, fully qualified to grant and is known as a volunteer.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Griffin?
Aye.
I have the ordinance, amendment number 12, adopt the June 8, 2016, entitled the ordinance, authorized the mayor to enter into agreement with the New York State Department of Recreation. So move.
Sir.
Any question?
This is regarding the two buses that need to be moved. The reverse end, I don't think these are commerical ones. We're all going to work together. They may be out.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I just wanted to say that whether to go to the department asking, putting up a meeting around these whole buses. Yes, there's, you know, a lot of buses that we received over the years.
I was saying, you know, so they can be stolen from here.
Special units, those, discussing. We've all broken down all the buses.
There's, uh, I'm not, actually, I'm not remembering, but there's a lot of cars in the parking lot across the street. Police vehicles, but absolutely, we need to keep this garbage hanging around.
Go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Griffin?
Aye.
I have ordinance, amendment number 11, adopt the Arts on Third, 2016, entitled the ordinance, authorized the mayor to enter into agreement with Westchester County College. So move.
Sir.
Any question? Uh, yeah, really exactly. I don't think anybody would understand this. And this study, I'm trying to...
This is the dates.
What was this ordinance? What was this ordinance for the agreement?
Now, it was a program. Westchester Community College, they changed the dates. The date originally was September 1st and October 2nd. Then what?
Did this study cost the city anything? Or is it a granted program or something tied to the season?
It's a grant upon some new offices.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Griffin?
Aye.
I have ordinance number 17, ordinance, amendment number 12, adopt the July 13, 2016, entitled the ordinance, rank of permission to the Department of Recreation, the sponsor of private playgrounds known as public events in New York City.
Sir.
Any question? Go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Griffin?
Aye.
I have ordinance 18, ordinance authorized the mayor to enter into agreement with Westchester County Department of Social Services for recreation and assistance services under the title of the Old World Therapy Act. So move.
Sir.
Any question? Go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Griffin?
Aye.
I have ordinance number 19, ordinance authorized the mayor to enter into agreement with the New York State Department of Labor. So move.
Sir.
Any question? Uh, yes. That was for number 19. Enter into, uh, the day. Is it just for his disability?
No, this is one of the New York State Department of Labor for some employment initiative. And they now have to pay $1,000.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Griffin?
Yes.
I have the ordinance, authorized the mayor to enter into agreement with Westchester County Department of Social Services. So move.
Sir.
Any question? Um... Yeah.
That was, um, some of the years.
All right, now, to put on a record, that you're not so quick with Westchester workforce investment. Uh, knowing that it's not a, like, thing of this particular dollar. I don't know, is that... Excuse me, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Griffin?
I'm with you, President.
Council President Griffin?
Yes.
I have the question number 21, ordinance authorized the mayor to enter into agreement with Westchester County Department of Social Services and the Office of Workforce Investment. So move.
Sir.
Any question? Uh, it will be the same as the last comment. The business of these actual motivations will be, uh, changing myself on this, so... Go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Stand.
Council President Griffin?
Aye.
I have the question. I have ordinance number 22, the ordinance authorized the mayor to enter into agreement with Westchester County Community Opportunity Program. So move.
Sir.
Any question? Yes. Yes, I'm... Go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Stand.
Council President Griffin?
Aye.
I would like to ask that, moving with the channel, we can be this, very sentimental, congratulations to the 50-year-old for all his grants that have been lost across the country. That's a great effort. They all did a great job of that. Number 23, the ordinance authorized the mayor to enter into agreement with Westchester County Department of Social Services. So move.
Sir.
Any question? On the first line, I have also, the restrictions and... I don't need to say anything on this particular one. All right. I'm on hold for a second. I'm also... But, thank you, this is, uh, I think you did ask, I'm... Yeah. I think it's standing.
I want to go to this council business, this one, because we don't have...
Um, this is, so...
Okay, all right. Um, go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Standing.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Standing.
Council President Griffin?
Yes.
And I have the ordinance number 24, the ordinance authorized the youth girls to accept donation on the New York Public Library. Lawrence Hospital, in the amount of $10,000.
Sir.
Any question? If I can, if you want to talk to us about... All right, go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Griffin?
Aye.
How does it seem to be close?
Thank you, President. I have a couple of products that generate the right authorized by the mayor to enter into agreement. The tapes are international, so...
Sir. Any question?
On the person, the person, there was no, there was no discussion on this particular item about, you know, tapes is used to restrain and stop criminals and things. But as a part of the 21st century policing, there's certain things that can be tried out together as people, as we seem to be. And this is one of the things that they're going to be training. I just want to put you on a duty service and it's one of the things they use to restrain violent criminals. But we're still talking about when it happens, they talk. Again, Councilman Wallace, I did get a packet that I received on 21st century policing. And I would ask you, Mr. Chair, of how it seems to go to you, a little bit of a chance. So we can go together and make sure that things are being done correctly and not based off of, like, running programs or...
There are now, there are now the tapes that they bring out the tapes. They bring the tapes. I don't have a problem with it. Because I've heard the police pull out a tape and tape somebody rather than pull out a gun and shoot somebody. So it's a, I think that's a better option that at least we have, which is something that they could go with other than, you know, the gun. So I think everything is not a bad idea. And it's something that, you know, I think would be about these offices. And actually, it's topical, but not, you know, the person.
Councilwoman Edwards? Can we have a copy of that, Mr. President? You know, that you just said that we gave away.
I have asked the City Clerk's office to send it out electronically, but it was too many pages. But I also asked them to make a copy of it as well. I thought George did as well, I remember. Did you put a news line?
I'll give it to the City Clerk's, and they didn't receive it.
That's the information, but for a second. I said, I got a, I got a copy of it, but I got a second copy of it. I think they gave another copy from George Brown, so it's a second package. That's how we were able to read the other package. I think it might be, so... I started George's first, I guess, getting it. I got a second reading, more of it. And the tapes are, they were true.
Just a couple of things. One, I didn't realize that Taser was company-made. So when you say Taser, as I've been saying, your ops and things like that, so that's interesting and all. Another thing, I don't know, I remember Councilman Edwards, years back, the police came in and told us that Taser training is very important because when the cops were in a serious situation, what they reach for, knowing what they're reaching for in the field, what they reach for could have catastrophic repercussions. Because when you're reaching during that tense moment, if you're reaching for your Taser, but within, you're reaching for your gun, you have a quicker trigger waiting. So knowing what you reach for and what side your Taser is on is all critical for police training. So I'll definitely want the police to go to this training so that they can do, reach, they reach the right apparatus and use the weapon. So, thank you.
Well, that's, uh, thank you for that, to the Councilor. With the Taser, can we be updated and notified of the training so that we can be more aware of what is happening for that particular training? Issues of this way. We know at least, if anything, to, you know, using, the use of the Taser for the public, we can understand the actual, uh, whole, overall situation and be able to address it a little better. So it might be something that maybe that the council will get rid of on a particular type of training so that we all are aware of what's going on with those kind of situations.
Absolutely. Actually, when they come back from this training, they're supposed to report it. And I would like things to be burglar reports when they come into our office and have some dialogue with us. And I ask the Council President, we'll be inviting them next council meeting to have some, uh, just some of the things that are part of the 21st century vision, so that we're, so, uh, ready to listen.
Am I any chance of getting a council member to the Taser? Uh, I'll work on your... Thank you, Mr. President.
I think, honestly, I think it's time that the, uh, Matt and Lee or the Deputy Police Commissioner come in and talk to us. You know, who did have permission to kill you on a record basis. I think, you might not just say a record, they're coming in, you know, like, to employ. I think it may be time for the Deputy Police Commissioner, Deputy Police Commissioner, to come in and just give us a synopsis of what we know on, um, this summer and, you know, some open cases. So maybe at the next, possibly, we work, like, work session or maybe the second one in September, if we can have it. I appreciate it.
Oh, I think it should be both. I think it should be one for a work session. Well, work session, so...
I think we should, it's kind of a little council day to become very curious to see what the roles are and the accomplishments that the Speaker and the Attorney in his part as a deputy commissioner. So we'd like to do something, also, I'd like to know, uh, run heads, the others that, you know, our shots fired, how it is, and where's that looking at. So the city and what they're doing, uh, in terms of, uh, they're just so rumors now. So just, that's something that I think that we should be able to present some more, so that's...
Okay, I'll work on it and, uh, prepare. Yes, we'll do the tapes and, uh...
As a question, you have to press go. Go for the tape. Do you want it? No, we don't need to go ahead. Go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Griffin?
Aye.
My name is Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the ordinance authorized the transfer of the funds to the Department of Labor, $1,722. So move. Second. Second.
Any question? Go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Griffin?
Aye.
I have the ordinance authorized the mayor to break title probably on what you remember in the 90s and 90s period. So all the people or South President, so move. Second.
Any question? Go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Griffin?
Aye. Before we, before we go, I know that we are getting some regards, some of the city of the property going to, um, some of our public service. Folks, I'm going to make a clear request that we don't have as many private counties available as city of thousands of our boroughs as people may think. There's a process for us to actually be able to have a full entitled personal properties. And there aren't that many private owners who are that. Also, we have a law that says that we cannot sell our city properties to any city employee. So we have to create a safe process. And something I have been thinking about, um, since I'm Chair of the Real Estate Committee, um, to find a way to scale that back and maybe we can have a right to pursue after we put out some of these properties out to bid and then through a process allowing some of our, um, public vendors buy some of the properties. So, um, again, this is an issue where, um, selling these properties to these officers, um, uh, firing, it's not as simple as it sounds. I believe we have to change the charter, revert on that some of the properties just being employees. It's something that has to be, has to be, so, thank you.
Mr. President, I have the ordinance authorized the four parking meters. So move. Uh, there's a hole in the 28th, you know?
All.
The hole, they have the second meters. What, one?
Yeah, we have a long road, because 28, 29.
I have a resolution of the City Council setting a date for a public hearing on the proposed zoning text amendment to create a, uh, the transit oriented zone and the government district. So move to that, that public hearing is on... But they scheduled to be on September 14th. It's a separate. Second.
Any question? Go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Aye.
Council President Griffin?
Aye.
I have a resolution in support of disability to increase the retention program rate. So move. Second.
Any question? Go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Griffin?
Uh... Is there, is there a matter to leave before this council? Very early, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn, but I would like to adjourn this meeting. The moment of silence was important, innocent ones we had in our city where a young child was, we're not sure what exactly happened in that part of the situation that was happening in our city. But, um, it was a young child who, who came asking until he was going to want me to know that innocence is earned and how that goes along with the silence. Is there any of that he says? Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. And in addition, a great, great, great pastor, Peter Wilson, who was one of the pastors that ran the big deal, but he ran a wonderful local church and had a great congregation. I was able to attend the debate and just saw how churches that he built in that community. What a wonderful, wonderful man. He had a great pouring of PBS bourbon and, um, surely, surely, he was a true man.
He was also involved, you know, in, once with, um, working with, uh, police and police stuff. He was one of the most involved in the city of our, uh, true love.
I have this fellow church, I spoke to someone who was a church director, I'm saying, he's in college, but certainly, Greg Olson, at any time, I do not... He was just in the neighborhood, he stopped by the church and he even had, uh, a birthday today. He said he loved you, prayed for you, and he just was, um, he really just loved you, and he's a great one, a great one. So, first...
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Councilwoman Luso?
Aye.
Councilwoman Letherton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wallace?
Aye.
Council President Griffin?
Aye.
Please stand before the moment of silence.